Mr. Lawrence. Is there a second by Mr. Guines? Any discussion? There being none, all in favor suspending the rules? It's approved on a 7-0 vote for the clerk. Thank you.
To the consent agenda, we're substituting item 5B, resolution authorizing reduction of facility rentals for Gulf Coast Center for Nonviolence, substituting 5C Exhibit B Only, resolution authorizing reduction of rental fees for Pink Hearts Fund, adding 5Q Resolution clarifying Resolution Number 51419, authorizing award of pre-event debris removal contract for Crowder Gulf, adding 5R Resolution authorizing submission of a request for funding to the Mississippi Department of Marine Resources for GOMESA funding to be utilized for a dual-purpose boardwalk and/or erosion barrier. Adding 5S Resolution reappointing Amber E. Guest to the Board of Trustees of the Biloxi Public School District. And to the routine agenda, we're adding Section 2 for docket of claims in the amount of $132,791.38.
Is there a motion to approve the amended? Excuse me, the agenda is amended. There is by Mr. Lawrence. Is there a second? By Mr. Guines, any discussion? All in favor? It's a 7-0 vote here. All right, thank you. We'll start with the mayor's report. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. We welcome everyone to today's meeting. I do, if there's someone from-- Thank you. Whereas, from proclamation on behalf of City of Biloxi, whereas more than 53,000 children and adults in Mississippi have intellectual or developmental disabilities, whereas individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities share the same aspirations as other Mississippians, striving for success in education, meaningful employment, and active participation in community life. Whereas Mississippians with intellectual or developmental disabilities have a right to live, learn, work, worship, and thrive in the communities of their choice. Whereas these individuals make remarkable valuable contributions to their schools, families, neighborhoods, faith communities, and workplaces, enriching the fabric of our society and deserve full support, respect, and acceptance from all citizens of our state. Whereas it is essential to recognize and celebrate the unique strengths and talents of individuals with intellectual or developmental disabilities, acknowledging their vital role in Mississippi, a more inclusive, compassionate, and vibrant place for all. Now, therefore, I Andrew Fogle-Gilich, Mayor of the City of Biloxi, hereby proclaim the month of March 25, Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Awareness Month. Thank you very much. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Short, to the point. Thank you. There are no departmental reports. We'll move to the council reports. Mr. Lawrence.
Yeah, we got a couple of things. We had the second week in last Friday with the senior games. They still have a nice crowd, and a lot of people attending that, so that was good. Rodney came, and he had to go to another event, and the mayor come late. He got stuck in traffic, I guess. The mayor, what was the problem?
Problem, didn't get enough time.
He had a little problem, but he got there with the nice crowd. They had this thing on TV about all the stuff that's happening in the City of Biloxi. My thing to you, mayor, is how come we not informed before that's on TV, the city council? I mean, it's hard for us to watch TV, and they tell us what's going on in the city council and the city. I mean, that should be sent to us, those three things they talked about. We should at least had the information. If people call you, I say, "Yeah, I saw it on TV like you did." So I think that's something that you need to straighten out.
Well, certainly, you know, with our public affairs, we try to do our best. I'm not sure what events you're talking about, but we've got a crew that their mission and goal is to keep everyone aware of things. Some things don't get to the radar either. So without defending or whatever, our role is to keep everyone aware of what's going on. And the phones work both ways, so, you know, if there's any question, you know, we've got the ability to answer that.
The problem is the question is late. That's my question to you. We got it late on TV. We should at least had the information before on the three different things they were talking about on the council. The one was the biking, the other was about the new trees, you know, putting up more trees on the tree yard and stuff like that. And all I'm saying is that should have been at least sent to the--
Well--
You know, that's your-- We are people doing it right. Just send that to the other before it gets to the TV. I don't have no problem informing anybody about anything we're doing, none of that. So the other thing is, have we done anything with the Quavis Comfort Place in Jenkins Lane? And people still waiting to try to build them houses? Are you going to get those paved?
Looking at the list on what to get paved.
Yeah, but I mean, I'm just saying, we hold enough people want to build houses in cities, so all we got to do is put the streets down, pave them, and extend Jenkins Lane, and you're talking about another five or six houses.
Well, if they come, we'll respond when they request for some very specific movements and planning and that sort of thing. We have not had any requests, Gary, on any kind of building permission on that road. But we will respond. If there's somebody specifically ready to go, we'll be right there with them.
Yeah. Well, one of them was the one that wanted to build a house on Comfort Place. That's why he wanted it on the corner. After Mom and Dad lives on the beach, he was trying to build a house right there. And I told you about that with the doctor.
Yeah.
They've done that right.
We'll be responsive, but we have not been asked.
Yeah. Well, I've asked you several times, so, you know, they don't have to ask you.
He has his permit.
He has a permit. The one that has inquired. There's nobody else pending.
So that's enough reason to get them paved. Pull some of them nickels out of the back of the bank and pave them.
Thank you.
Excuse me for a moment, Mr. Lawrence. Mayor, if there's somebody, one of the directors that wants to speak, if they would, get to a microphone so everybody here can hear it and the rest of the world when it's on video. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Lawrence?
That's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Guines, in Ward Two?
Yes, I just wanted to give kudos to the mayor, breakfast with the mayor. We got an opportunity to see the mayor at health and all the new things that are coming within the community. And of course, mayor at health sits in the heart of Ward Two. And knowing that Nico and those guys and that staff is doing a great job, people are not afraid to go to the hospital, so thank you for that opportunity.
Anything else, Mr. Guines?
That's it.
All right. Ms. Newman, in Ward Three?
Yes. So last week, I did make a motion to have a public hearing, which turned into a town hall meeting about the Broadwater property, and it included the methadone clinic. However, some constituents still proceeded on with getting signatures to hold a public hearing specifically targeting the methadone clinic and revoking their permit. And I would like to fight for what my constituents deserve and need. So I would like to make a motion to direct what they're asking for, to direct the Planning Commission to hold a public hearing in order to make a recommendation to city council for a final decision on revoking their permit, if that is the process to do so. That's what I would like to do. Jerry, is that the process? They have the signatures from what I take it.
Well, because they're operating under a conditional use permit, the first thing we'd have to do is to identify what specifically it is that they're in violation of. And the way that the process works on conditional use is that we conduct an investigation. We go out to look to see if it's actually, in fact, true, what's being reported. If it is, we would write them a notice, giving them a specific amount of time to correct that violation. If they correct it, like they did before, then that's the end of it. If they don't correct it, then we can take it back to Planning Commission and city council if they don't correct it within that time period that we give them. But, you know, this would be like any other due process case. You have to give them a chance to correct whatever the perceived violation is.
Is holding a public hearing in error of doing that?
Well, that would be premature at this time. I mean, you know, before, we had the complaint about the dumpster and about some things in the parking lot. We went out there, we brought their attention. They corrected the problem with the dumpster. They've kept the property clean ever since then. They hired a specific company to come in and take care of it. There was a question about a needle out in the parking lot. The methadone clinic does not use needles. That could have come from anywhere. We've asked the police department, "Have you seen any transactions going on out in the parking lot? Any type of illegal drug transactions?" No, we haven't. So I'm just, I need something specific about what's being violated before we can even write them a notice. We have to show them the section of the code that they're in violation of and give them a chance to correct it.
And how many violations do they need to get before we can consider? Does it all need to be the same violation? Does it matter? Or does it matter how many violations, period?
Well, I mean, from time to time, we'll get a complaint that there's multiple violations going on on a certain piece of property. And what we do, we go out and investigate, and if there are multiple violations, we list all of them in the citation. But I understand now, and I just heard about this today, that there may be a complaint that some of the people that are going to the clinic or parking over in the auto parts place. Well, we need to investigate that to see if the auto parts business gave them permission to park there. We have reciprocal parking agreements all over town where somebody's run out of parking, and they'll go to their next-door neighbor and ask them, you know, "While y'all are closed, during your hours that you're closed, would you mind us using your parking after hours or before hours for our event?" And if we get an agreement in writing, then that would be allowed. But we just heard about the parking thing today.
So if the neighbor doesn't give them the parking approval, and they still have an issue, then what?
That would be up to them to correct. But we would write them a letter telling them that they don't have adequate parking for the clientele that are coming there, and that they're going to need--
That's a big issue, so how can they correct that if their neighbor won't let them?
They could go around and visit with their neighbors and see if they can use their parking when those other businesses are closed. But we, again, we would have to give them time to correct that problem.
Do they have security guard?
Not that I'm aware of. I can check into that. But everything that we've checked, everything that's been brought to our attention, the wooded area in the back, the trash has been removed, the undergrowth has been cut out of there, the dumpster has been secured with a lock. We go by there, or our code enforcement officer goes by there once a week to check, to make sure it's being cleaned up. And they've checked it today. There's no violation there. So unless we have something specific that they're in violation of--
Okay, so you're gonna get in touch with them about the parking issue today?
I will. I'll talk--
And how long do you have to give them to correct that issue?
Well, typically, we'll give them 30 days to correct whatever it is. Now, if they're parking on that property, the auto parts business, without authorization, the auto parts place has the right to have those vehicles towed.
I have a question, or may I?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. So, you know, we've dealt with conditional use cases and how it's been presented in a blanket dialogue as if we give somebody a conditional use and it starts causing issues, you know, whether it's parking, whether it's increased drug traffic or other illegal uses. It's been presented, and how I've interpreted it, that can be a basis to revoke the conditional use. Is that not the case? And maybe that's a Peter question, but I'll pose it to you, Director.
Okay. Look at it from this standpoint. A lot of people we have here operate businesses. If the city had the authority to take away your business license, take away your livelihood without due process, a lot of us would be in trouble. We, the ordinance is very specific about the steps we have to follow to get it done. Yes, the Planning Commission, city council do have oversight, with the council being the ultimate authority, on whether or not a license gets revoked. But first of all, we have to determine what-- We gave them a conditional use permit. That was approved. As long as they comply with these standards that are in there, then they're in good position. If they violate one of them, then we can bring it to their attention, give them a chance to correct it. But we can't just vote today because we suspect something's happening there or whatever and take these people's license away from them, and we'd be setting the city up for a lawsuit if we did that.
But I'm, I mean, that's, I understand what the, it's a slippery slope, but how it's been presented in the past is that, hey, if you approve this and it doesn't work out, and it's creating issues, and we document those issues, like I said, parking, illegal activity, needles, you know, that are found, and drug usage, and all that stuff. I thought that was a premise for saying, hey, this isn't working out in the best interest of the public safety and public good, and we could use that as a basis of saying we're gonna take the conditional use away. Am I not correct on that? Because that's always been my understanding.
If they don't correct it. Now, if y'all interpreted that the Planning Commission of the city council has the authority to just take someone's license away from them, you know, on minutes notice--
Director, we're not, I'm not saying that. I'm not saying, hey, I don't like methadone clinics, and so now I got an ax to grind. If the methadone clinic is not causing problems, no big deal. But Councilwoman Dixie is up here every meeting saying, "We got an issue. We got an issue. We have an issue. We have an issue," every meeting.
Okay, and I guess what I'm asking, what specifically is the issue that they're in violation of? That's what I need to know in order to take action. If you give me something specific they're in violation of, we'll write them up today.
Councilman, let me just jump in as far as what you're saying, because I know what you're talking about. It is sort of always dangled out there. It's conditional use. If it doesn't work out, we can revoke the conditional use, which is true. I'm not, at least the six years I've been here, I'm not aware that we've ever actually revoked one. I'm not sure we've ever gotten to the situation we're in now where we've actually written a letter, given them a chance to correct the action. But I think under our ordinances in the LDO, that's the process we go through. So they don't have a use by right to have a methadone clinic. If they did, we'd have no authority. But the fact that we have the right to send them a letter and saying, "If this is not corrected, you will be shut down", that is the power we have under conditional use. So some of it is probably just that we've never gotten to this point. And to Councilman Newman's issue of, can we have a public hearing on that? I think we could have a public hearing just for information. And as part of the town hall, we said Broadwater and surrounding areas, just so we would not specifically have to make it just about the clinic itself. But we would definitely invite them, and we knew there'd be discussion on that. So that's why we, and the difference in a town hall and a public hearing is of, I'm not sure if it's a distinction without a difference, actually, because we're going to try to decide and get direction of where to go next.
Well, and let me just remind you, we did write a letter. We wrote a letter to the methadone clinic, and we told them that the dumpster was a problem and that the property in the rear was a problem, and they cleaned it up. So that's the end of it, unless something else specific comes up--
I think specifically, you know, it is attracting, let's say, even more of the homeless that is already in that Broadwater property. And now the Broadwater property has always housed homeless for a long time. But again, we're in a situation now, since COVID, where they're aggressive. These are transient homeless people. We're not dealing with our usual people. And so this methadone clinic is attracting that crowd, so it might not even be necessarily their patients. But, you know, yes, there's speculation and this and that, but I think the community is just wanting a public hearing to be able to get these answers perhaps, and be able to state what their concerns are. And I don't see a problem with that, per se.
The city council can call for a public--
Calling a public hearing is not revoking the permit, per se. It is giving the community a chance to voice their concerns, and then they can voice their concerns, and then the Planning Commission can give us a recommendation on how to move forward. That's what we're looking at.
We can consider that part of the investigation, but the Planning Commission, city council have the right to call for a public hearing anytime that you want to.
Well, how can we, how about we charge you to do an investigation and go ahead and charge a public hearing to the Planning Commission a couple of months ahead? And then that gives you time to do the investigation, and gives them time to build a case on each side, type of deal, and then see how it goes.
If that's the charge that goes from the council, that's what we'll do.
Okay, so I make a motion to charge the Planning Commission with a public hearing to consider revoking the permit for the new season clinic.
A second. All right, so there's a motion to charge community development. Carrie, did you get all of that? Okay, and there's a second by Mr. McGilvery. Is there discussion?
I got a couple of things--
First of all, how much time do you need to do your investigation before we hold the public hearing?
Well, I mean, you know, we can go out and investigate. If, the only thing that we've heard recently is about the parking, and that won't take long for us to investigate. All we got to do is contact the auto parts place and see if they have the agreement--
Also investigate, you know, it's been said about the needles, but also, you know, investigate is, whatever they give them, are they taking it off-site like the accusations say? You know, how do they do their process? Anything that the community is worried about or, you know, that they're alleging, I would like to be addressed. And that's fine, too. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Lawrence.
You got, the biggest question you got is them in the parking lot. And I don't know how you're going to investigate that. They loiter around the parking lot. You deal with addicts that go to the clinic every day to get their methadone. That's how it works. Every day, you have to go to the clinic. Now we have them hanging around, and that's when the rest of the, not methadone, but that's when the rest of the dealing start, because they're in the parking lot. Now, how are you going to investigate that? I have no clue. That's the biggest problem. You have them type of addicts hanging around the parking lot, waiting for their drugs. You know, the parking, yeah, they might clear it up. The trash and everything, the property was terrible. Only if they cleaned all the back. The pictures I've seen, they had to do it pretty quick if they cleaned all of it up. But the problem is, you have addicts loitering in the parking lot, and you can't stop that. And my other thing is, kind of going with Kenny, after so many complaints, usually pull a conditional use. You can't sit here and let them correct it for the last four or five years, have 10, 12 complain. So we have another complaint, the parking, another complaint, the loitering in the parking lot. Okay, you investigate them. If it ain't right, then pull a license. Does create nothing. It's not a safety for the citizen. The people living around there is terrible. I don't know how the businesses stay open, because that's what you have, that kind of element you have. I mean, they're addicts. Most of them are heroin, and they use methadone to get them off them, but methadone is another drug, so then they hooked on methadone. So they got to go. It used to be Alabama, and they moved that here to Biloxi. They had to go to Alabama every day, all the people in Biloxi. So that's how that works. They don't take nothing off-site. They used to have the wafer, was part of the thing. They used to break it up and put fentanyl on top of the wafer. You know, I mean, it's just, it's just one bad thing after another bad thing. There's nothing good for the City of Biloxi at all, that clinic, so I'm eating back.
As a business owner myself, you know, if somebody was complaining about my business, of course, I wouldn't want the city to just, you know, close me down because of some allegations. I get that part. But I also have the understanding of the businesses around them. And if their business is being affected by their business, then I would want to voice in that as well, so that's where I'm coming from.
Okay. So any other discussion?
Yes, I would, just a couple of things, if I may.
Mr. Shoemaker, go ahead.
Regarding the investigation, Director Creel, when you say complaint, is that a complaint from us, or can any citizen make that complaint to you guys?
We get complaints in our department every day. And it's just, you know, some of them are very specific. We actually saw this happening or this going on at our next-door neighbor over there. And then we get complaints where we just don't want it. Well, "we just don't want it" is not a specific complaint. I mean, that's something, we have to, we have to go back to the LDO to see specifically what they're in violation of, and that's how we address it. So we'll conduct the investigation. We'll see if there's actually violations there that violate the conditions in the LDO. And if they are, we'll present them to the Planning Commission and bring it back to the council.
Perfect. Thank you, Jerry.
But if someone calls, if they say, hey, there's trash in the back or on the parking lot, or people congregating at a business next door, and I know your department will investigate that, but pictures, videos, does any of that matter? Or does it have to be your people have to see that? Your employees have to see the actual violation themselves?
Well, pictures, pictures always help. But like I said, we've talked about this, and we've talked with the police department about it. You know, have y'all seen any evidence that people are exchanging drugs out in the parking lot? No, they haven't. The only report we got was about the hypodermic needle that was out there several months ago. And when we talked to the methadone clinic, they said, "We use absolutely no hypodermic needles in our line of business." And to go back to Mr. Lawrence's question, the, according to the operators, the methadone is administered inside. It doesn't go outside. They don't come in and get a pack and take it out. It's administered inside, and then they leave.
Right. And I guess, lastly, this is my last question, but if, so if someone calls in, regardless of who it is, and there's parking at the auto store next door, people congregating, whatever the complaint may be, but if that's, say, that's, they're calling in at 7:30 in the morning because there's 45 people in the parking lot. Obviously, you guys have other things are pressing. So by the time one of your people get out there, one of your employees get out there, and there's nobody there, that's going to go as just unfounded, I guess. So if there's no pictures or video, I guess that's what I'm getting at. There could be things every day happening and they're reported, but by the time somebody gets out there to document it, it's, you know, unresolved. Everybody's gone, or the trash is picked up by the owners, or the cars are moved by that time?
And we get those kind of complaints all the time, too. Somebody will say that, you know, before 8 o'clock in the morning, there's 10 people living in this house over here, and they got all these vehicles. So what we do is we arrange for one of the code officers to go over there at the time that the complainant tells us it's going on, and we try to get pictures then. A picture's worth a thousand words in court. So we do everything we can to try to document whatever it is we're trying to say, rather than it be one person's word against another.
Right, right, okay. And I guess lastly, and I said that was my last question, I'm sorry. So if a citizen takes a picture or a video of a group of people, whatever it may be, and sends it to you guys, emails it to y'all, that's a good thing?
Yes, it is.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you, Director. That's all I have.
Okay, I just have a couple of comments. I'm assuming if somebody has a complaint, that they'd call the police department and make a complaint, that there's a record of that. So it would be easy to check with the police department to see if there are any complaints on record. All right, that's my first thought. The second thing is, we have this town hall meeting coming up in three weeks, and I suspect because of the way this town hall meeting is titled for the homeless and surrounding areas, I would be surprised if that didn't drive, that town hall didn't drive a number of observations from residents in that area. And I would think maybe we would get more specificity at that point. So personally, I just think a charge to the community development at this time is premature. I think it would be better after the town hall meeting. Again, that town hall meeting is April 15th at 6 o'clock at the Civic Center. That's about three weeks from now. So I won't be voting for this motion because of that. I just think it's premature until we have that town hall meeting. That's my opinion. Any other comments?
Yeah, to that, you all, we have too many complaints. It's not premature. This is an ongoing problem. And they, when they, before they opened their clinic, they lined up, they're waiting. And what they've done, they've taken the tablets away, and they use liquid now. So they weren't swallowing the tablets. They were doing whatever they could to turn out, turn around with them, but they use liquid now instead of the tablets. But the problem is, they're all there, waiting to get into the place, because that's, they have to do it once a day or twice a day. So they, it's up to how bad they are. So that's why you have so many people in the parking lot, and that's not a good thing. It had nothing to do with the needles. The needles was another deal. That's transpired in the parking lot. It had nothing to do with them. Like you said, they don't do needles. So I mean, that had nothing to do with that.
Mr. Lawrence, you know a lot about this. Maybe you could help us with the investigation.
Oh, yeah, I can. You always research. You got to research and find out the whole deal, yeah? Yeah, I do know a lot about it.
Any other comments for discussion? Okay, we'll call for the question. This is on, the motion is to charge the community development--
with, excuse me, the planning commission to hear, hear this matter in a public hearing. Okay, I want to be sure I got that correctly. All in favor? All opposed? It's approved on a six-one vote. Thank you. Anything else, Ms. Newman?
Oh, that is it, thank you.
Okay. Okay, Mr. McGilvery, Ward four.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've got a couple of positive things I want to mention. We've had two great improvements to the dog park in Ward four. Handicap accessible slab was played, put in place about two weeks ago. And I think the park was closed for about that period of time. But it's back open and with the assistance of Mr. Leonard, we have trees planting out there. And I understand from Director Bell that there's some other amenities that'll be taking place there at the dog park. And I've gotten a lot of great comments about that and I want to thank the administration for that. The second item is finally, it looks like in the next day or two, all the lights back on Pops Ferry Bridge are gonna be up and running. Originally, we had eleven, which you know, Mayor, that were in need of repair. We got that down to four and then we ran into some major issues with some electrical complaints. It was reported to me by Public Works. And we have the right players that are out there today, tomorrow, finishing that up. And hopefully, all the lights will be back up. And there's been a lot of attention about them lights. I know you've received complaints about them because I know I did, too. But I want to thank the administration, Public Works, and the Electrical Company and Mississippi Power for getting right back on that. So thank you. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. McGilvery. Mr. Glavine in Ward six.
Yeah, I got a couple of things. First of all, the A.J. Holloway Sportsplex is humming with activity, both with league play and tournament play. This past weekend, it was a big tournament, over sixty teams, I believe, participated. And then this next weekend coming up, we got another tournament. So it's certainly attracting very quickly the type of audience and the type of teams and the type of promoters that we wanted to see, all while taking care of our, our league teams as well. All, all the league teams are doing well. All the rain yesterday, the deluge of rain, even though we didn't have anything scheduled for the afternoon necessarily, I went out there in the fields, you could play on the fields, you know, it wasn't a rain out like in the past. And so that's a very, very positive thing for Biloxi. So my colleagues on the council, Mayor, and everybody that helped enhance the Sportsplex, my hats are off and thank you, thank you for that vision. Another thing today, the mayor had, we had breakfast with the mayor today at Biloxi Memorial Hospital. And Chief Geiser's daughter, and this hit home with me, Mary Beth Geiser, she was one of the speakers. And she's got the crown for Miss Teen, I believe, in Mississippi. And she'll be competing for Miss Mississippi, is, is that correct, Chief? Yeah, so your, your daughter's beautiful inside and out. But one of her platforms, one of the things that she, she did a great job talking to the crowd today is about organ transplants. And she's very passionate. She got as emotional as our mayor today at one point. And she pointed out some facts on organ transplants. Ninety-five percent of the people polled say that they are for organ transplants. But a vast majority are not donors. And it's very, very easy, if you get a hunting or fishing license, you can check that box. If you get your driver's license, you can check that box. And one of the things on her, she had a brochure, is don't take, don't take your organs to heaven. You know, let somebody live. And so you're very proud of her, Chief, I could tell. And Biloxi's very proud of her, too. Best of luck in her future. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine. Mr. Shoemaker in Ward seven.
Normally, I have a pretty good bit to say, but instead of beating a dead horse today, I'm gonna say, no comment, no report.
If the council clerk would duly note that Mr. Shoemaker has no comment today. Thank you. Just a couple of things, a reminder that I have a Ward five meeting tonight at Donald Snyder Recreation Center. It's open to the public. Following that Ward meeting, there will be a neighborhood meeting for the residents in Bay Vista subdivision, where they can learn more about the water well and water line replacement out in that subdivision that's going to roll out in about a month. Also, the last thing, Mr. Mayor, we've got a, an homeless individual in a tent, one right now on Grand View Drive. And I know if we can get ahead of this, if we don't get ahead of it, we'll, we'll see. As we've seen since folks are moving from the Broadwater, some migrate west, they're just going to move to different spots in the city. But I have residents who are concerned and very anxious that this one individual is gonna lead to several individuals of very short notice. So just need code enforcement and police to do what they can and, and help this homeless gentleman in a tent choose a better location, if we could. That concludes my comments. All right, that brings us to the public agenda. And we have a public hearing scheduled. And if the clerk would read that, that's item three A.
Citizen comments first.
Excuse me. We're doing citizens' comments first or last following this? Okay. All right, we'll open this up to citizens' comments, then we'll do the public hearing. So any individual who wishes to address the council will have up to three minutes to address the council. We'll set aside up to forty-five minutes for those comments. When you're recognized, I'll recognize you just come up to the table. There's a pen, a sign-in sheet. If you would, write your name and address down. You have to pull the microphone close to be heard. State your name clearly so the council clerk can record your name accurately. That being said, is there anybody on my left, your right, that wishes to speak? Yes, sir, Mr. Eldred.
I'm off. Back to bed, thank you.
There you go, thank you.
Sorry about that. Like to ask the clerk to enter this in, exhibit into the records. And I'll read it. Petition is requesting a public hearing to enforce code on Broadwater Development LLP properties and revoke the conditional use permit for new seasons by Biloxi Clinic. My contact information's George D. Elder Jr. Address is one eighty Jasmine Street, Biloxi, state's Mississippi, zip is thirty-nine, five, thirty-one. Telephone is eight oh two, two nine one, zero zero, one zero. And my email is D O L V C O N T at gmail dot com. Broadwater Development LLP's properties are approximately two hundred and sixty-six acres of property at the center of Biloxi's peninsula in a public nuisance and a reflection of the selective code enforcement. This property consists of, but is not limited to, the following parcel IDs, twelve, ten, L dash zero, one dash zero, zero, one point zero, 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 one, 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 O H dash oh, four dash oh, oh, one point zero, 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 twelve, ten, E dash oh, two dash oh, oh, two point zero, 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 twelve, ten, K dash oh, one dash oh, oh, one dash, excuse me, point oh, 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 one, 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 zero, one dash zero, one dash zero, zero, one point zero, 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 and twelve, ten, L dash oh, two dash oh, five, two point zero, zero. According to the section nine dash one dash thirteen of Biloxi's Code of Ordinances, it's unlawful for any owner or apostle of land to permit or suffer the excess accumulation of litter upon apostle of land within the city section nine dash one dash thirteen. The Broadwater property has been in violation of this ordinance for several years. But the city has failed to act appropriately and in a timely manner to ensure violations are resolved and/or processed with legal action against the owners of the property in accordance with section one dash one dash eight, general penalty. Additionally, the ordinance deems this tissue, this issue as a public nuisance and the city may pursue any and all further enforcement procedures and remedies available to it beyond criminal penalties. It is clear that the discussions alone are not solve the suffering of Biloxi residents caused by the Broadwater property. Thus, immediate and thorough action is required to include criminal penalties and civil fines. It is not pro-business and it's certainly not pro-resonant to allow this situation to continue for any longer.
Thank you, Mr. Eldred. Is there anybody on my right, your left, that wishes to address the council? Nobody on my right, your left? Go back to the left. Yes, sir. Come on up, Mr. Silvestro.
Hi, everybody. As you know, I've been doing this a long time, trying to get things done. And I want to, first of all, say thank you to everyone for paying attention. I'd also like to thank Mr. Anderson for calling me yesterday and asking for an opportunity to meet Ms. Ford. Also, I, for a reason, I was at Dixie's shop and the Back Bay Mission came in and on me. And I spoke the way I felt I did, wanted to. And they asked for me to meet with them and we spent an hour together. And maybe I was wrong about some things. They could do things better. But I did found out between the not-for-profits in this town, they're all fighting with each other. And they looked at me like maybe we all need somebody to bring us together. The issue isn't gonna stop. It's just where it is now. And as I walked my neighborhood and talked to people, there are dozens of people that feel like, if they live in a certain neighborhood, they're fine. But if you live by us, you live by the Broadwater, you're trash. And every single person I've met with says, I can't do anything without the mayor. And every time we ask, and the mayor will tell you right here how many times I've been to you and tried to do things. And I think he, nobody cares more about the city than the mayor. And he has fought hard with people that are necessarily working with him to do all this plumbing and do things and go over. And he deserves some respect for that. But also, everybody's got something bad to say about everybody. But I'm asking him for the last time, give me a chance to work with these people slowly, not in a giant meeting. And I think maybe I could bring people together with a common cause. And maybe we can make the villains look like the good guys. My wife said that I have a big flaw, and that is I find the good in everyone. And then I wait until we can find the bad. But we all have good and we all have evil. And whoever started this whole mission should have never stole my wife's seat cushions. We're not going to stand for this anymore. There is a lot of people on the Broadwater. There is maniacs back there. They're running through our neighborhood and scaring us. And yes, they are out there cleaning the property. I also like to thank Mr. Elliott and his people for trying to reassure us that what he's gonna build in that area is gonna be good. I'd like to thank Dixie and George and everyone here and Mr. Shoemaker for sticking up for us and doing things. I've tried everything. I went to the Citizens Academy, I beat doors. We have to do something. And I don't know when I was allowed out on that property. But there is children's playsets and homework for kids to work on out there. You people all need to be involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Silvestro. Just a second time, anybody on my right, your left? All right, we'll go back to the gentleman in the corner, Mr. Ulrich.
Good afternoon, everyone. I am running for Ward three, City Council, which is part of this Broadwater property. I've talked to a lot of residents. I've knocked on a lot of doors, face to face. This is a huge issue. I've assured them, if I can get on the council, that I'm gonna work with Jerry Creel, I'm gonna work with the mayor, I'm gonna work with the residents, face to face, and we're gonna get this problem resolved. I plan on working with Jerry as often as I need to, if I need to be on the property, if I need to work with Chief Miller. I'm gonna be very hands-on. And as far as coming to Fofo and saying, hey, what are we doing about it? You know, I want to come to Fofo and say, this is what we are doing about it. Same thing with Chief Miller. You know, I hear a lot about, what are we doing about it? Well, I feel like as being on the council, I'm responsible for that property as being the city council. So it's, it's kind of funny to me that I see we're hosting a town hall, April fifteenth. The election hasn't even been done yet. As far as I'm concerned, next week on Tuesday, that's gonna be a change. So on April fifteenth, you know, we're gonna have a town hall. We're probably gonna have a new city councilman up there. And, you know, I'm ready to take it on. And whatever we need to do to get this thing going, we're gonna, we're gonna make some changes. And that's, that's what I, that's what I want to sit up here and express to y'all. We hadn't heard nothing about the vote. To me, this is gonna be a pretty big vote next week because there's gonna be some changes up there. I mean, and I know three people are unopposed, but I know we got four council changes coming up. So just, you know, I know Mr. Fofo's running as well. But, you know, we're going, we're going, ready to get up here and do what we need to do, do what we need to do to make this city better, get that Broadwater, the methadone office, whatever we need to do to get some changes in place and make the residents feel like something's happening. Because I can assure you right now, knocking on everybody's doors, there are some upset people. You know, nothing's happened in years, but I'm looking at in the last month to two months, all of a sudden, Broadwater, I see stuff happening over there. Now I see a town hall meeting being called and we got an election a week away. I feel like it's, it's a little bit too late. It's a little bit too late and the residents are seeing it and they, and they, and they see what's going on. It's time for a change and I plan on making a change and we're gonna, we're gonna get things changed over there. So.
Thank you, Mr. Ulrich.
Very welcome.
Anybody else on my left, your right? Miss Laurie, Laurie Silvestro?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I came in late to the game and I'm gonna have to rush out. I wasn't even intending to speak. But one thing that I would like to say is while I appreciate people running for office, coming up here and addressing the council, I don't think it's just the council's responsibility. As private citizens, we could have been working on this as well, just as hard as my husband and my neighborhood have. So I just wanted to get that point across. You don't have to get on city council to start doing the work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Silvestro. Anybody else on my left, your right? Yes, ma'am, on the front row.
My name is Darrell Hunt. Actually born and raised in Biloxi. Went to veterinary school in Starkville and came back to my hometown to open my practice. So I'm at Edgewater Veterinary Hospital. I'm not next to the Broadwater property, but there is a wooded area that runs along the railroad track for quite a ways. So over the years, you know, thirty-something odd years in practice, I have to agree with Ms. Newman. We are not dealing with the same garden variety homeless people we've had all along. We've always had them. Things have changed. We've had a symbiotic relationship with the homeless all along. We have helped feed them. We have given them odd jobs to keep them in beer, drink, you know, whatever their vices might be. And in return for that, they would look out for our property. So if something was stolen, you could walk into those woods and say, hey, you know anything about this? And, I mean, cut the police right out of it. Sometimes just recover your property. We've been doing that for decades. Now, we're in a situation where it is actually dangerous. There's one behind the woods that has a machete. And I know this, not because I just go walk in the woods to say hi to the homeless people, but I had a client who didn't have his cat carrier properly put together and his cat ran into the woods. And so an employee of mine went with him to kind of look. And we've put out a live trap and he's been going there daily to try to feed this cat or feed. And we also alerted the homeless, like, hey, there's a reward if you can help this man. the homeless, like, hey, there's a reward if you can help this man retrieve his pet. And they were greeted with this machete carrying homeless man trying to force them out of the woods. This is not the garden variety homeless that we're accustomed to. So there is a new element, and they're out in numbers. And I don't care if it's the Broadwater property or what, I don't think we can blame it all on the Broadwater property. And I don't know that the methadone clinic is necessarily, you know, the problem either, although I'm sure it's part of it. I know they're coming from New Orleans. They're, you know, New Orleans had a clear map, they've got to go somewhere. Obviously, there's a bigger problem. But something's changed, and it is dangerous. I don't go to my practice at night by myself. I don't allow my teenage after-hours and weekend employees there at night because I'm afraid for them and I'm afraid for my business. It's not so bad that I'm going to relocate my business, but I got to tell you, if I were looking to do it all over again, I wouldn't be doing it there. That's all I have to say. But thank you, Ms., you're absolutely correct in that it's not the same homeless we've always had.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt. Anybody else on my left, your right?
I'll make it real brief, gentlemen, ladies. I'd like for you to bring to your attention, consider agenda item five J, very vague, very vague description and the amount of $195,000 from the S M P D. I would just ask that you discuss this when you, when it comes up for vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gemmell. Anybody else on my left? We have somebody on the right. Yes, ma'am, your left. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Miller, and I am a business owner in Ward Three. First, I want to start off by saying thank you, Dixie, for the stuff that you have done, the implementation to clean up that area. So we are right there on Camellia Street and Southern, and I will tell you of a specific instance of homeless. I mean, I could sit here and take all of the time by telling you instance after instance. But there, we have had many items stolen from our property. We have video cameras, and you can, I don't mean to be stereotypical, but you can tell that they are not, they are living in the homeless community is pretty much the gist of it. But one, I was there working pretty late at night, and there was, I had two of my workers there with me. He had an electric bike that was in the front of our, our front door. We're in there, and one of the, a gentleman came by and stole it right there in front of us. I mean, we were inside, and by the time we got out, he was gone. So I immediately called the police, and thankfully, I will say a huge thank you to Biloxi Police Department because they are always just right there. When we need them, they're on the spot. And so they were there within just minutes. We had our video cameras, were able to pull up the picture. Police officers knew him immediately. They knew him by name by just looking at the picture. Actually, within fifteen minutes, they were, they called me back on my cell phone. They had the guy just right up the street with that bike. So I grabbed my two employees. We jumped in my car, drove up there, and here they're frisking this guy. And of course, he had all kinds of drugs all over him. He had needles. And it was just another instance where I do believe if that methadone clinic was not there, we would not have near the issues because they are just confined to that area. We have it all the time in the business. I work a lot of hours, and I work a lot of times by myself at night. I'm terrified. I, and I'll be honest, I carry because these people, they're always up at our business. They're walking up like right next to our, our front door, and it's just, it needs cleaned up. So that being said, I just, I will say again, thank you so much, Dixie, for the implementation that you have started because it has gotten better just in the last few months.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Is anybody else on my left, your right? Yes, ma'am, lady in the front row.
Good afternoon. Shelley Kendall, twenty forty-eight Greater Ave.
Would you repeat your name close to the mic?
Shelley Kendall, Greater Ave.
Thank you.
First, I'd like to say that coming up here and stumping for a political office, when citizens are trying to express to our current council members our fear and terror in our own neighborhood, is disgraceful. Thank you to the members that are currently in place and trying to listen to us and help us. We do appreciate it. Thank you, Dixie. Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. Now on to the issues that you're hearing continuously out here. Broadwater is a nightmare. They have literally turned our backyards into the latest Biloxi landfill. There is tons of trash out there. We have homeless people that are anchored to that property because they are going to this methadone clinic. They're not going to leave because they are drug addicts, and they are getting handed drugs on a daily basis. We fear using our backyards. We don't walk in our neighborhood. This is not a safe area anymore. It is not the city police's job. It is this property owner's job to clean up this property, clear it out, and be done with it. They are being allowed to not be held to code like the average citizen is. If my lawn gets too high, I get a citation or I get a fine. Cotton Four, Roy Anderson, seem to be getting a free pass. They don't have to clean up anything. They don't have to mow anything. They don't have to maintain anything. Code enforcement needs to be enforcing code across the board, and that means on that property and on those owners. This is selective enforcement at its worst, and we're paying the price for it. We live there. We, as you saw, we have business owners that are suffering for this. They fear leaving their offices at night. This is horrific. It needs to stop. Again, thank you to the sitting council for hearing us and working with us.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anybody else on my left, your right, of which is to speak?
Good afternoon, City Council. As Paul said, I'm Jared Fusco from four through five Cove Drive. I actually come today a bit unscripted, and I know you usually see a piece of paper in front of me with these discussions, but I want to make a few points. In twenty sixteen, this council, and I know many of you weren't on this council at the time, approved the conditional use permit for the New Seasons Clinic, Methadone Clinic, as we've called it, right? It was approved unanimously at the time, but as a stipulation of any conditional use, you have to show that you're able to protect property values. It's one of the eight standards. I would honestly need a lobotomy before I believed that you would, that a methadone clinic behind a single-family residential next to daycare centers protects property values? Sorry, I just think there needs to be more thought into that. And I thank you, Dixie, for kicking it over to the Planning Commission where it should be for recommendation on revocation, especially because I believe that was a mistake. With that said, that was in twenty sixteen. In twenty seventeen, Mayor Fofo here put it in front of the, the city council, and it was split vote, got denied, the Boulevard School being turned into a homeless shelter at the time. I'm not saying that I agree that that would have been the best solution in the end. I don't know, but it was a solution, and he offered a solution. And that now was eight years ago. So we acknowledge that there was a problem eight years ago, and even before the methadone clinic opened, there was already, I can, I can pull up numerous newspaper articles that show that there was a homeless issue already on the Broadwater property, all the way back to Katrina. So we had a methadone clinic right next to it. I can walk right to it, the Broadwater property. We offer a solution to the homeless shelter, offer a homeless shelter, and then we, we turned that down. And then for the last eight years, we've chosen to do nothing. Did we just expect the problem to just go away? I don't believe any of you, like, this was a willful action. I think this is just, we get busy in the day-to-day, and sometimes we oversee these problems and, or think they're not as severe as they are, but, but this is a serious problem, and it's been a serious problem for a long time. And again, I think we're on the right path with the revocation of, of that conditional use permit. But again, the problem existed even before that clinic. So we can't stop there. I believe the town hall is a good start, but we need to start looking for answers, and mayor, please keep offering them as well. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fusco. Anybody else on my left, your right, wish to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Cecilia Ritter. I wasn't intending to speak on this specific matter today, but since I live in that neighborhood, I am going to make you aware of a few things. So I also have a business in that neighborhood. My husband and I live in a house that we're restoring in that neighborhood. I moved here November the twenty-eighth full-time from Pensacola. Since I have lived here, I have been approached at the neighborhood Walmart parking lot by a homeless person who banged on my window of my vehicle and screamed at me that he knew I had money to give him when I said I could not give him any money, I didn't have any cash. He refused to back off. By the time I called the police and the police showed up, of course, he was gone. Then I was at Starbucks one day, and a man came from around the back of the sign. Again, kind of the same situation, panhandling, asking for money. This all happened within our general neighborhood. Now, I haven't lived here very long. My business is brand-new, so all of those things come with struggles, right? But I will tell you, as a female, I am afraid for my safety. And that is sad considering I have not been here even six months. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ritter. Is there anybody else in the room that wishes to address the council? Last call. Anybody in the back? Okay. That closes citizens' comments. And that brings us to the public hearing at this time. If the clerk would read that item, please, three A.
Public hearing to consider an appeal filed on behalf of Genuine Entertainment requesting a reversal of the decision by the Special Events Committee to deny special event application for Bike in the Beach.
Thank you. All right, so we're going to conduct a public hearing, and just for those of you out here who've never sat in on a public hearing before, this is sort of the format. The, Mr. Stearman here, who is appealing the denial for a special event, will open with ten minutes, and he can make his presentation. And that's followed by fifteen minutes from probably Mr. Creel, I would assume, would lead, and perhaps the police department, they'll have fifteen minutes to explain the reason or reasons for the denial. And then Mr. Stearman will have five minutes there at the end to raise any issues that might have been missed the first time around, or to respond to any comments that Director Creel of the police department may have said, and then, and then a closing. So that's ten minutes to Mr. Stearman, fifteen minutes for the city, and five minutes back to Mr. Stearman. Okay? All right. All that being said, Mr. Stearman, and we'll, we'll keep strict account of the time. The clerk would note that. Hit the timer for ten minutes, if you would. You're ready to go. All right, Mr. Stearman, it's all yours.
Should I sit or stand, or does it matter?
It's entirely up to you, but if, wherever you are, standing or seated, you'll need to hold the mic close.
Yeah, my voice kind of carries. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I really appreciate your time. My name's Jason Stearman. I live at three fifteen Goose Point. I'm very much a member of Biloxi. I live in your ward. I do business in your ward, and I'm building the heck out of your ward. And my partner, Jen, lives in Mr. Schumaker's ward. So we've been here for a long time. I'm the owner of Coastal Development Group and several other businesses. We own, well, we built the sanctuary and manage the property right now. I've built multiple properties around New Orleans, the Gulf Coast, all over Biloxi. I'm sure many of you know me. We went to the DRC a little more than two years ago with our plan to turn this seventy-year-old historic church, it was the Trinity Baptist Church on Camellia and Southern, and we let everyone know of our plan to turn it into an entertainment destination, and I'm pleased to announce that we got a unanimous vote, and many members of that voting group are still here today, and we appreciate that. And in fact, I remember the community development director pretty much went to bat for us, telling us about what, telling everybody what a good idea it was, and Fofo, thank you, I remember you patted me on the back and said you were looking forward to putting this place in commerce. Two years and more than two million dollars later, we've done that, and that's our own money. This isn't grant money or anything like that. We followed all the permits, we followed all the rules, and the building is in commerce, and a lot of the homeless things that we've heard about today have actually been pushed away because of our actions. So we've had several property, events at the property since then with no incident, and now we're promoting several festivals, including this one, trying to get a recoup on some of our money. We've put together a few slides for you guys to understand what's going on. We received a letter from the City of Biloxi with specific reasons for denying the permit, and we've gone through and made a comment about each one of those, and we'll get into that in a moment. But basically, our vision is to create this annual traditional event celebrating motorcycle culture, and of course, introducing more people to the beach and to the Mississippi Gulf Coast, and letting them know about all the great things that we have to offer here. And we're really hoping that this will eventually turn into another cruise in the coast. It's a very big money-spending demographic, the motorcycle enthusiasts. It's a very expensive hobby. Most of these motorcycles, the average Harley's like forty, fifty grand. It's a very solid group, demographic group as far as spending money, and everybody in the hospitality business will tell you that they, they really believe in it. Some of the restoration impact and community partnerships we've had since we've built this, I've gotten the sanctuary registered with the Mississippi Departments of Archives and History as a building of historic significance. And also, we have passed the Part One application of having that entire district reclassified as a historic district, which will obviously qualify every property owner there for twenty-five percent tax credits from the state of Mississippi, which will incentivize everybody to do improvements. And it doesn't have to be historic work. Don't freak out. It doesn't mean you have to paint your doors green. It means that if you do a roof, you get twenty-five percent. So that's one of the impacts that we've had. And also, Coast City Church, I'm pleased to announce, this Sunday, we actually had our first church service back at the church. And when we built it, we never intended for that to happen, but God works in mysterious ways, and we were presented with an opportunity, and we had our first church service last Sunday, and we're going to have them every Sunday from here moving forward. It's the first time there's had church in that place since Katrina, by the way, so pretty proud of that. As far as the economic impact of this event that we're trying to get approved, it can't be ignored. We're hoping that we'll have about five thousand attendees over the course of a four-day event. We're hoping about a thousand per day. Comparable events, you guys cited a lot of these in your research, and I'm glad you did. Daytona, Myrtle Beach, the big one is Sturgis. Daytona brings in about a hundred million dollars a year to that community. Sturgis brings eight hundred million dollars in ten days, which is incredible. We did our math, and the average spend per day for people at these kind of events nationwide is eight hundred ninety-two dollars. If you exponent that out, our four-day event should bring potentially twenty million dollars of new money to Biloxi and the surrounding area in a four-day weekend, which is a substantial amount. We're obviously going to create some jobs with additional services needed for cleaning, hospitality, and some contract work for garbage removal, and parking attendance. So into the items that they brought up as concerns, the first one is we are located in a residential area. That's just not true. concerns, the first one is we are located in a residential area. That's just not true. It's zoned as community business. I also came before this council to get the building rezoned, and we got a unanimous vote on that. We do back up to a neighborhood. We were looking to do some outside entertainment in the north parking lot that we own, but we have an alternative that we can talk about in the rebuttal. If you guys would like, we can move the outdoor stage somewhere else. We have a couple of options. We already do, we are an existing permanent entertainment venue, and we have events there a couple nights a week. Parking solutions also. The red at the top of the slide is our actual property. We have property on both sides of Southern Avenue. The big blue rectangle immediately south of that, that actually shares a border with me, is what's always the car corral during Cruising the Coast. I've secured a lease on that. We have complete control of that before, during, and after the proposed time. And also, the six hours south of Highway 90. So there is no concern. This encompasses our total footprint of about 10 acres, and with easy math, we could park 10,000 motorcycles there. We're not planning on having 10,000 motorcycles, but we have an abundance of parking. There's also a light-controlled crosswalk right there where people could move back and forth under an existing crosswalk. Other thing about city resources, we certainly appreciate that. We're not trying to reinvent the wheel. We do this all the time, seven times a year for major events. We want to do one more. We think this year it's not going to be very strong because it's an inaugural event, but we're hoping that year after year, we'll get bigger and bigger and bring more business to the city. So we want to hire private security. Harrison County Sheriff's Department has a program where you can hire off-duty reserve officers. We're planning on utilizing that. We also have a private contracting company we're working with. And then another concern is traffic management. We're going to, again, not reinvent the wheel. We're going to try to use processes that already work, having the emergency lane closure on Highway 90, obviously coordinating with the police and fire and EMS. We also have designated emergency access-only points to all of our parking and festival areas. And, I'm sorry, go back to the other one. And we're going to utilize what's been traditional is coordination with outside agencies like DPS, Harrison County Sheriff's Department, et cetera. We will follow, one of the city concerns is preventing proper access. Like I mentioned, we're going to have dedicated emergency access. We're going to follow established proven plans. We'll have first aid on-site. We'll coordinate with the city. That's part of the process of us doing this. And there was a mention of how we're going to contain everybody to one designated area. We're not trying to do that. This is like one part of a festival that's going to spread out all over the coast. Again, thinking of Cruising the Coast, Jeeping the Coast. We plan to have a lot of events there, like we normally do, but this is going to be people traveling from Waveland to Mobile and seeing all the different things. We have participation from many different businesses all up and down the coast. I do understand, and we are aware of the concerns about police diversion and response, the same thing that we've already talked about. But the big thing to consider is the amount of new revenue that we're going to bring, and that will also bring tax with it, is going to help to offset any of those additional costs that our event may create. We've got multiple businesses supporting us. I've included letters from three major supporters in your packets. It's Harley-Davidson, the Hard Rock Cafe, and Treasure Bay Casino. We've got hopefully testimony from some of our local leaders, and we plan to continue our partnerships with local tourism agencies. And our commitment to you is we respect and understand all of your concerns, and we plan to take them very seriously, which I think you can see that we have. We're going to collaborate with whatever city departments, and we think that that's going to be beneficial for all of us, especially us, to have a successful event. We're going to be very proactive and transparent, and we want to make this a premier event destination. We want to make this another reason that people come to the coast, and specifically, the great city of Biloxi, to come and have a good time. We know that tourism and gaming are a big backbone of our economy, and we want to promote that. These next few slides are just some of the flyers and promotional materials. This is an event site layout that we submitted originally. Like I said, we didn't have that parking secured. We didn't know that was going to be a concern, and we actually had addressed it before you guys brought it up and let us know that it was a concern. That's the north parking lot of our property. That is the car corral, which is again, like, two acres. And now you can see how it all lays out together. We have a big footprint, and we're going to use things that have already been proven to work in order to make this a success. And we just respectfully request that this council considers that this is a first time for us. We will come back to you year after year. You're not going to give us an endless permit. We'll come back and have to prove ourselves every year and show that we did a responsible job. And then we can learn some lessons and make it better, make it safer. It's going to be a family-oriented event. I think I forgot to mention, we're going to open it with a blessing of the bikes. And I've invited the police to bring their mounted motorized police to do that with us, and all the other surrounding agencies. This is very much going to be a friendly, cool, safe environment, and one more great reason to visit the Mississippi Gulf Coast. Thank you very much.
Phew, take a breath. Thank you, Mr. Stearman. I think you only took two breaths in that 10-minute period.
Hold on.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I'm full of the time.
Sure, thank you very much. All right, Mr. Creel, the next 15 minutes is yours, and any other support from any other city departments who need to comment or so forth.
Take a breath.
Okay. I won't take up 15 minutes. When this came before the Special Event Committee on February the 27th, there was discussion about what was being presented. I think a lot of what was the concerns was this would be a first-time event. And the only thing that we really had to compare it to is some of the things that we go through with Cruising the Coast, you know? What kind of traffic, is it going to cause traffic problems? What area is he going to use? Parking was a concern. But I'll start with what was listed specifically in the denial letter. You know, the Special Event Committee is made up of me and some of the other departments, especially the Police Department. We also have Fire Department in there. And I'll let the Police Chief and the Fire Chief address the police and fire concerns. Specifically, there was a concern about the fact that this property, which is the old church that's there, that's now called the Sanctuary, that's at the corner of Southern Avenue and Camellia Street, it faces Camellia Street, was very close to Southern Avenue. And Southern Avenue does have a lot of residential property on it. It is zoned commercial. He does have the, what we call the entertainment zoning, which is CB, Community Business. That's our lodging and entertainment zone on the property itself. The parking lot that's on the north side of Southern Avenue, right across the street, which is also part of his property, was rezoned to NB. And the reason we didn't go to recommend CB on that was because it is next to some residential houses over there. So we thought that that zoning was more appropriate. It was the lowest zoning we had that allowed a parking lot next to residential. So that part was all a part of his original application, and all of that was approved. I think one of the concerns we had in considering this at the committee level was that if all of those motorcycles were going to be on this piece of property, he doesn't have adequate parking to accommodate all those motorcycles being there. But like we mentioned before, when we were talking about the methadone clinic, there are what we call reciprocal parking agreements all over town, where someone will go get a neighboring property to agree to allow them to use either parking that's not being used, or parking that is used after hours. His location that he has right now, yes, it's next to a residential zoned area, but it's also right across the street from Treasure Bay Casino. So you've got a heavy commercial use right across the street from where he is. And I did tell Mr. Stearman yesterday that if the council does agree to this, we would have to have written agreements about that parking with Treasure Bay. We couldn't just take his word for it. We'd have to have a copy of that, you know, to support it. So we believe that he has satisfied the parking requirement. We believe that most of the activity that's going to be held is going to be held along Highway 90. This is a first-time event. Again, we don't know really what to expect, but you know, this first year, we could learn a lot from that and just see how well it does, or how well everybody behaves, and go from there. The inadequate resources, I'm going to, the chief can, the chiefs can respond to that. Traffic interruptions, that would be something that would be concerned. From a zoning standpoint, we do know that there will be probably some events held inside the sanctuary, inside the church. And you know, I guess the biggest thing would be, is it going to generate a lot of noise that's going to disturb the neighbors in that neighborhood? And number two, is the parking going to overflow into the neighborhood? And from our standpoint, I think Mr. Stearman has done everything he can to accommodate those questions. So anyway, that's my spiel.
All right. Is anybody else, maybe Chief Miller?
Well, I appreciate Mr. Stearman and his presentation today. The reality of it is, I don't know how we can handle another big event. You already know the events that we handle now. The week after this event is Scraping the Coast. So any overtime that I have will be gone by then. But even beyond that, manpower is going to be a major issue. And we've been up here many, many times and talked to the council. I know you're all aware of the manpower issues that we have, mainly because of the number of events that we have. And Mr. Stearman went out, went out on a limb a little bit and said that he, that he could provide Harrison County Sheriff's Department officers. Well, the reality of it is, the Sheriff's Department already gives us all the officers that they have to spare. So I doubt very seriously there's going to be anything, anything for him to rent or buy. Private security doesn't do us a lot of good unless there are parking cars in a parking lot. They can't make an arrest. If they, if they affect something, a sworn officer is going to have to go deal with it. So I guess most of my problem right now with it is, first of all, it is a first-time event. And I know, I know that he's prepared for 1,000 people, but if you look across the country, you'll find that most of these motorcycle events bring a heck of a lot more than 1,000 people. And I do believe it would be something like a Cruising the Coast type event. I believe it would bring a huge crowd, even the very first time. We're not equipped for manpower-wise to handle it, along with all the other events that we have to deal Absolutely, absolutely. And I'll be happy to answer any kind of questions I can for you.
Okay, I'll see Captain Payne in the back. I don't know if Captain Payne had any comments to make or not, but if he wished to. I think, I see the Fire Chief in the back. Chief, do you have any comments? I know, remember, we're constrained by time here, but it's an opportunity if there were comments you wanted to add. Thank you, Captain Payne.
Hello, Castle. How are y'all doing? So when I was given this application, I don't know if you're aware of the process. We have, when I get an application, I have 15 days to review it. So when we get one of these Tier 1, Tier 2 events, which is our large events, I reach out to our partners along the coast, law enforcement partners, and just to see what resources they have, so I can give accurate information to the committee. I'm not a voting member on the committee. I only give the information, and the committee makes the decision on whether to deny or approve an event. Calling our partners with Cruising the Coast and these other events they already give us, it's going to be extremely hard for them to supply any other officers. We only have so many officers with the Police Department that we can pull for events, because we still have to cover our normal patrol procedures. We just don't have the manpower, like the chief said. So that is, that's our biggest issue with this event, is the manpower issue. Location is an issue, because we've had some complaints about the noise in that area. And with motorcycles, I'm pretty sure those would go up too. But as Director Creel said, it is, it is a commercially zoned building, but it is close to a residential area. Do y'all have any specific questions for me I might be able to answer? Now, when we first got the application, I saw the parking. We didn't have that lot. That was after. We had already voted, and it went on to the Mayor's office.
I do have a question.
Yeah, that's also with the traffic concerns. With greater southern area, you have two ingress and egress points. And one of them could be blocked by a train. I brought that up in the committee meeting, and that was one of my safety concerns with that. If with Camellia being under construction, and you had all those vehicles and pedestrians in that area, and you block that road off, what happens if a train breaks down on that street and we have to evacuate that neighborhood? It's a dangerous situation at that point.
No, I'll save my questions until we get to the discussion on this particular item, since we're constrained by time now. Mr. Creel, did you or Police Department or Fire Department have any further comments? Your 10 minutes. Okay. Mr. Stearman, you have your five minutes for rebuttal, as they say.
Thank you again, and I appreciate everybody's concern. And I'm glad to hear that we're all, there's a room full of smart people, and we're thinking this through. And I really mean that. Like I said, I don't have the slide up, but we originally planned on putting our outdoor music entertainment in that north parking lot that belongs to me. But now that I have the lease agreement in place, which by the way, you do have a copy of evidence, written evidence of that in your packet from Treasure Bay, I can, and I talked to them, if you guys would like, I'll move that down to the south side of Highway 90 to alleviate any noise concerns. We do have concerts there. We had a massive concert there Friday. I was out of town with family business, but we had, I don't know how many people. And we have not, I'm not aware of any noise complaints that we've had there yet. So we rock it out there every weekend. So, and we, again, we are going to spread, spread this thing out. I do appreciate everybody's concern, but there's going to be people all up and down. It's not like everybody's going to be in Biloxi at the same time. Everybody's going to be in Gulfport at the same time. They're going to be moving around, visiting hopefully every business, every mom and pop up and down the street, buying fuel and beer and lunch and gambling and paying to see, come see shows at the sanctuary and other things that are going on. And yeah, I agree with you about Camellia Street. I would, I would be the first one to tell you, I'd dang sure like to see that done a few weeks ago when it was supposed to be. There's an excavator the size of this room parked in my front door for the last couple of weeks. Jerry unfortunately has heard me banging the drum, and so has Fofo. Those guys are driving me crazy out there. I'd love any pressure from everybody to lean on them and have them handle their business and get that job done. But I do, I have been assured by Walt Rhodey that they're going to be out of that intersection within a couple of weeks. I think he told me that a week ago. I believe we've seen more action. You know, they've obviously been leaning on those guys to get that job done. And hopefully, it's an eyesore and a danger. Their, their, their traffic management and signage is an absolute joke. I mean, if you don't live around there, you're going to get lost. I complain about that probably 10 times a week, unfortunately. And that's not the city. That's we've got ourselves stuck with a less-than-great contractor. I wish I had that job. I'm available to answer any questions that anybody has. And again, I'm not trying to diminish the importance of anything. Certainly, that the police are bringing up. I know that these are all serious issues. You know, we will do everything we can to support it. And I didn't mean I could bring the Sheriff's Department out here. I just know that they have a service of reserve officers that like Moonlight, and you can hire them. I think it's like 28 bucks an hour, and they'll come out and work. And they're in dual capacity. They're in a private function, but they're also sworn officers, and they can, obviously, will be professionally trained to support our professional officers. That's what I was talking about, as far as that. And private security, I'm open to any suggestions or any vetting by the chief or anybody else within any of these departments. We want to be a help. I don't want this to be a nuisance. And bad luck, we picked that date because we knew that there was not a lot going on in the motorcycle community. And I don't know how we missed Scraping. I know it's a week apart. I really don't think that we're going to have as huge of a turnout. I'd love for us to have a great turnout the first year, but it is the first year. Totally open to next year. We plan on planning this one the day after this one is over. We kind of are learning, flying, or building the plane as we're flying it. We're more than happy to sit with everybody involved next year and say, hey, guys, can y'all do it this weekend instead of that weekend? As long as we have time to notify everybody, we can move it a week or two. It's just a real sweet spot. And the idea, yeah, it's summertime. Man, this is when we want people here. We want them to bring their American Express card and, you know, learn about the coast and go to Dixie's Coffee Shop and come see music with us and, you know, go play a few hands of blackjack and have some dinner, and go back and tell everybody how great the coast is, and come back. Open to any questions. And again, thank, thank you, everyone, and I appreciate everybody taking this very seriously, because obviously, we are.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stearman. That concludes your comments.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. So this public hearing is closed. And we'll next move to the policy agenda. And this is a second reading. If the clerk would read item 4A, please.
Orders to amend the municipal facilities.
The motion was made by Mr. Glavine, the second by myself.
Yeah. I mean, I think we've read through the facilities. If council can kind of fill us in on a couple of the highlights.
Maybe. Yeah. Ms. Quave, I know you're out there somewhere.
Rachel. I was going to say, Rachel probably could.
If you would, I think she'll be.
I don't think it's a major change. It's not really a major change.
I don't believe so, but she'll be able to explain it. Rachel Quave. Go ahead, Rachel.
As y'all are aware, we're trying to get facility rentals online now. And in doing that, I hit a little few stumbling blocks like we had on the Civic Center. We had, if you rent it for one day, it's $3,000. If you rent it for two, it's $2,000 the second day. That's $5,000, but a computer can't calculate it like that. So, this changes it to be $2,500 a day if you're renting for two days. It's all primarily changes like that that just allow the program to deal with the numbers.
So, nothing actually changes. It's just because of how the computer recognizes it or doesn't recognize, and that's all we're trying to accomplish here.
Exactly. Did add in, there were a couple pavilions that were just accidentally left off. I took the opportunity to go ahead and put those on too, but they're at the rates of all other pavilions. So, there's nothing really new.
Have no further.
All right. Basically, if I understood you correctly, there were two sites you had to add, but also it's a data entry thing.
It is.
The rates have not changed.
Has not.
It's broken down a little bit differently for data entry purposes.
Correct.
Okay. Were there any other questions by council members?
How you create the rates? How you created the rates?
The rates were either what we already had, or we did a lot of comparison studies as we were doing this. I mean, I pulled up, and Jamie helped, and Sherry and Peter, we pulled up all comparable places and evaluated at that time what we were charging versus what comparable facilities were charging. Most of the time, it was all about even. There were a couple, we made a few changes on. Civic Center being most expensive, we did not change at all.
So, y'all created the rates as a group?
Those existed prior to, yes.
Is that competitive with everybody else, or is that overpriced?
They were very competitive. Some things, I mean, we had to look a little further afield to get comparatives because there's just not really anything that comparative to this Civic Center. But for like the Gruwich Center, we compared it to like DeArberville Community Center, Mary O'Keefe, things like that, and they were all very competitive.
Anything else, Mr. Lawrence? Any other questions or comments from the council? There being none, we'll call for the question. All in favor of the ordinance, the amendment to the ordinance is presented? Okay. Thank you very much. It's a 7-0 vote. All right. If the clerk would read item 4B, please.
Resolution affirming the denial of special event applications submitted by Genuine Entertainment or Bike in the Beach.
I'll move it for discussion.
All right. So, the motion by Mr. Glavine, the second by Ms. Newman. Go ahead, Mr. Glavine.
Okay. All right. I've been studying this as I've been getting information recently, and I appreciate the hearing that we had earlier today. On the coast, we had many events on the Mississippi Gulf Coast. Some of them pretty large. Mardi Gras being one we recently held. There was a time when the night parade that one of our Mardi Gras crews was proposing was looked at as it may stretch us too much and tax us too much and, you know, should we do it? And I think today, we looked at that event, and for the most part, I think it goes pretty smooth. Certainly, we've had events that are not as successful, and we struggled to get those right, and we even contemplated should we hold them. And we get the data on certain activity, and that's unfortunate. And because I think, you know, some of these events that may not be as successful, they're kind of infiltrated by another element, and then it makes the whole event look bad. This one is interesting. We used to have the Harley blowout during Labor Day weekend, and although the main thrust of the Harley blowout was, you know, up in the Gulfport Speedway or Dragway, wherever it was, it was all along the Gulf Coast, and the hotels looked forward to it. And I'm going to put my hotel tourism hat on this event, and particularly the owner of the sanctuary that has invested a lot of money to promote events there. I believe him that he wants to be successful, and it looks like he put a lot of thought on this because I had questions when I first looked at it. Yeah, that parking, that parking is going to be an issue. How can you hold an event like this? So, initially, that was a big checkmark for me. Now, it looks like you've secured over five acres, maybe more. Eight acres, yep. The reason to say that, a long time ago, I used to help Mr. Boja run the Biloxi Travel Lodge, and we had seven acres right next door in between Treasure Bay and the Hilton. Anyway, so you're checking a big checkmark when it comes to this. The other thing, it's an inaugural event, and even Cruisin' the Coast that we patterned off of hot August nights in Reno, Nevada, only had a handful of cars its first year, and then it grew from there, and then we're trying to manage it now because we're kind of busting at the seams. We may be at that critical mass, you know, for that event. I like, even though it's June, right? We're looking at June. Even though it's mid-June, I like that your event is starting sort of in the middle of the week and going throughout the weekend. That's always a plus when it's not just a weekend event in my mind and certainly the hotel industry mind. Contrary to public belief, we still haven't reached maximum occupancy, especially midweek, even in June and July, believe it or not. They're good. They're not as great as they were before COVID. We're getting there, and certainly we want to see, you know, events such as this come to our shores. Chief, yeah, the manpower, and that's something I really didn't see within the application, actually. I didn't really pick up on that, and I appreciate and respect those comments, and that's a big question mark for sure. How do we get the manpower? How do we get, you know, the auxiliary officers? How do we get the outside security to make sure it's a safe, friendly, beautiful, like the mayor says, Biloxi? And I think all of us, our best interest, and I'm going to harken back to the Harley blowout. Very diverse group. You had lawyers, you had doctors, you had businessmen, you had, you know, the true Harley Lights or whatever they call themselves. And it was an interesting group, but over the years, because it came here for years and years and years, and, you know, we befriended a lot of those folks, and they became part of what we look forward to actually every year. So, I'm sold on this idea. We need to work out the manpower thing, and we got a little bit of time, not a lot of time, to try to figure all that out and who else we could reach out to. But I'm sold on this event being that we got new information today that you probably didn't have when you originally submitted this to the committee. And I'll yield to my friend, Mr. Tisdale.
Well, thank you, but you have another friend, Ms. Newman. Go ahead, Ms. Newman.
Well, you're the president, you got to give her the floor.
Actually, you said word for word what I'm thinking, but also, it's in my ward, and the residents, obviously, in that area are in support of it, which is huge. I mean, huge, especially being right off of that event stage. So, I mean, that makes a huge impact. Now, the manpower situation is a big question mark. Obviously, I don't want to put a burden on you, but at the same time, too, I hate to see us turn down an underdog trying to start being like Cruisin' the Coast, you know? So, if we can handle Cruisin' the Coast, we should be able to handle this event. But I can understand, too, it's the fear of the unknown. How big is it going to be because it is a first event? So, I'd hate to turn this down. I would like to see some kind of compromise. Can you move the event? Is it too late to September? Actually, September is beautiful weather. You can't. I'd rather, hopefully, I mean, especially see you move the event than it be turned down, but that's just my two cents. I'd hate to see the underdog be turned down is all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Newman. Are there any other comments or questions from the council?
I do.
Let me start on the left. Mr. Lawrence award one.
This picture right here, what roads you blocking off here?
Southern Avenue. That's the south part of property.
You blocking off the road so people can't, won't be able to get in and out?
Well, if you look, the only thing that I'm blocking off is the part between high two halves of the property that are divided by South Street. And I don't have to have that. I just think that it's smart because there's going to be a lot of pedestrians wandering around. We have vendors and vendors and things like that that we're planning to have there. Yeah. I'm sorry.
This map may help a little bit.
Yeah, if you zoom in, be exactly where it is. Right here. So, this is 90. This is our main building. That's our property there where we're going to, we planned on putting outdoor music, but again, we can arrange that in the event to the other side. But I thought that it would be smart to just close this half of this block because there's nobody that goes back for us and our parking. And then Paris Refrigeration is on the east of me, probably going to be closed, certainly on the weekends, they're always closed. And there's multiple other ways to get to like the apartment building over here. So, we proposed a blockage of that section, but I mean, we could certainly compromise on that. I'm sorry. We proposed a blockage of that section, but we could certainly compromise on that if we thought it would be difficult. But I think it'd actually make things a little bit easier because people wander, you know? If they're going from over here and there's a taco truck over by Jen and they wander, you know, I just thought that, and it's not a very busy section of, it's not like a main thoroughfare for traffic.
Have you talked to the city about blocking it all?
I'm sorry?
Did you present that to the city?
We put it in our application that that's where we would be requesting a closure, but we don't have to. It's not a deal break. Yeah, nobody's on it right now anyway because it's full of excavators.
That's construction.
Yes, sir.
That's my biggest concern, there's so much construction in there, that's pretty tough. I hope, like you said, if it's all done by June, that'd be a good.
They've told me that, yeah, they're definitely getting the heat from the mayor's office.
Yeah.
And from my office.
Mayor, if you would, pull the mic close. Thank you, sir.
People wandering between the parking lot to the east and then the Camellia ending down. Was there any thoughts to the motel, you know, in between Camellia and the parking lot to the east? Were you planning on renting that whole thing?
No, sir. What we're planning on doing is approaching them and having them be a partner and giving us a promo code to encourage people to stay there. But I actually border that Edgewater and the car corral parking. I actually have a boundary, shared boundary with them. So, we're actually just going to put a gate in my fence so people could just walk right through there and keep them, yeah.
Convenience and security is my concern.
100%. 100%. And that's why we talked about doing a gate because I was thinking, well, if we do things here year after year, it makes sense for us to, and we've got a good relationship with Treasure Bay that we can use that parking for other events, and I'm going to put a permanent gate there so you can literally walk out the back.
Now, I want to tell you a little bit about Camellia Street. You know.
All right, Mayor, don't get excited now.
No, I'm not getting excited.
I'll get excited about that.
Don't make me put the timer on you.
I don't want to underestimate what the complexity of what we ran across. The first thing that was broken was the sun and sand construction footing that they broke about four excavators on. Nobody knew it was there, okay?
Unbelievable.
Then, the design agent for this, this is all BFF, before Fofo, okay? All right. But anyway, what was called for in the design of the box that feeds drains in there, it wasn't, you know, there's not enough room to do what was supposed to be done.
Right.
And so, they're tap dancing. I'm not defending anybody.
Sure.
But just like everything else that happened in this infrastructure project, it was complex right there, and it's still complex.
True.
We've had to ask, you know, MEMA and FEMA what we should do, and, you know, so it is hopeful that we get finished.
I know they've had issues with.
Don't be surprised. Don't be surprised. You got a plan for the worst, and that's all, you know, that's my concerns.
No, and I appreciate that. And I know that they missed a benchmark and they've discovered that problem. I've talked to Jerry about it. I've talked to Walt about it. I'm really familiar with it. I see it every morning.
Your poker run, is that going all the way to Bay St. Louis? There's a poker run on your card here.
There's going to be multiple poker runs. We've talked to several different restaurants and things and other local businesses. Shaggy's is one of them. Yeah, we're going to have one that's going all the way out there.
The incentive is they travel up and down the coast, get their.
Yeah, that's the idea. You come here, you get an RV or a hotel, you ride your bike all day to somewhere cool, and then you come back. We've got a concert at night, and you park your bike, put on your flip flops and drink some beer, you know, and listen to the music.
And of course, as I mentioned, the motel, you can't forget the Waffle House.
And you got a Waffle House. Hey, that's, we put that on our website. There's a Waffle House outside.
All right.
But the Bayfront ends also, I mean, it's not the greatest hotel, but it's right there. We're going to get a promo code from them, too. And again, we're hoping that we'll fill both of those facilities up for them. We've got six condos at our place, and they're already sold out. So, like, we actually have short-term rentals within our footprint at the sanctuary. So, we need that. And we've talked to Treasure Bay, too. We've got a relationship with Quality Inn by Beauvoir. We send them clients all the time when we have large events. Centennial Plaza is already offering to do shuttle service to move people back and forth to see our events. Like, this is a big footprint. This isn't all on my corner, I promise.
Mr. Lawrence, I think you.
Is that your main setup, the sanctuary itself? Everything basically going to be there?
Well, we're going to have a lot of events there, and we're kind of putting ourselves as the home of what will hopefully be a legacy event. But there's other entertainment. We're talking to people in Ocean Springs, so there's going to, we can't accommodate everybody, and we don't want everybody to just come there and stand there and look at our building. We want them to go up and down the beach sprinkling, you know, $100 bills everywhere.
And you said you had a $20 million impact at 892 each person, times 5,000, 4 million, 400,000.
892 per day, and that's actually low. The real average is between $750 and $1,600 when we did last year, 2024, studies of most motorcycle rallies across the United States. The average we came up with is $892 per person per day. And if that sounds like a lot, you think about your hotel, that's 200, 300 bucks because everybody's going to raise the rates because they're going to be sold out. Go get dinner and a bottle of wine, 150 bucks. You know, we're at $350 already. Go play at the casino. Go get breakfast. Go get a tank of gas because we're going to go to McComb and see the Lynyrd Skynyrd Memorial. We're going to nominate a lot of suggested places for people to go ride to during the day that are not from here, so they'll go see it. Hey, go to Pensacola, leave early in the morning, go get lunch in Pensacola and come back tonight. We have a concert tonight. That's the idea. It's spreading people all over. Go to Natchez and come back tonight and see the show. So, we want, there's so many people, I've been doing hospitality and tourism for a long time from New Orleans to here, and it's surprising how many people come here and they're like, man, we didn't even know you guys had a beach. I thought this was Mississippi. It's like, yeah, it is. We got 40 miles of beaches, you know? So, that's what we want to do is encourage another segment that's missing to come down here and see all the great things that we have to offer and come back year after year. And they really are a good crowd, and they spend a hell of a lot of money. At Sturgis, it's 1,600 a day average per person. They do $800 million in 10 days last year, $800 million.
The next big question is how you stop the bad man from coming? The bad hombre.
Wait, wait, wait.
I'm talking about the bad, so the most...
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
I'm going to throw my two cents. George and I like to talk together all the time.
Yeah, we can do that. He got to take his blood pressure medicine. He gets a raise.
I think that everybody knows...
My blood pressure's not a problem, I can tell you.
I think everybody knows that you guys are taking us seriously.
One of my aunts, probably the most successful female, uh, attorneys in the world. She practiced law till ninety-five years old. And she always said, you do things and it's, and a lot of these things can be dreamed up, but it's like having a baby. Easy to conceive, hard to deliver. All right. Joey, wait, wait, I'm not finished with this yet.
Sorry.
This is real dollars that we're talking about. I think on this four day, you think we're in the two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand dollar impact direct to us, don't you think? Okay. Show me the money. That's, that's our big concern. Safety is first. Okay, convenience is next. Ongoing commerce is that. But it's got to be, you know, this is something, you know, a, a challenge for us. That's real dollars. You know, we talked sixty, seventy thousand dollars for, uh, a mighty go parade. That's two hours, three hours. So that's a consideration. I'm not saying, you know, it's, you know, it's, it's concepts, you know, it's, the conception is, is, uh, is, is worth in, you know, inventing.
Yes, sir.
But we need real, you know, real impact to this.
No, and, and that's why we did...
And, you know, even, I, I know it's not, uh, but you'd face that if you were to do something like this at the Coliseum. That's real dollars that impact that we're, you know, uh, more, you know, in, in a better situation to deliver an experience, real life experience with you as, but my main concern is that budget. Okay?
Sure. And, and I really appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. And one of the reasons that we did so much due diligence, and these are real numbers that we got this data from, is because we wanted to present it and have you make a, an honest assessment. We really think that it's going to bring in that kind of money, if not more, and that's based on last year's numbers at similar events as close as Thunder Beach in, uh, Panama City and Myrtle Beach and Daytona. That's not far from us. These, these events are all over the year. This is a very loyal, uh, money spending crowd. When they hear about these events, a lot of the, and I go to them too. People plan their whole year around it. Okay, well, June, we're going to Biloxi and August, we're going here.
Let me jump again. I'm, I'm, this is dollars. We're talking numbers.
Yes, sir.
It generates a hundred thousand dollars. You know where, you know, what we get back on a hundred thousand dollars in sales tax.
Uh, that'd be seven thousand dollars.
Eighteen point, no, eighteen point five cents on every dollar. That's sales tax paid. So other people are successful. We need to be, that two hundred fifty thousand dollars got to come out of our eighteen point five cents of that sales tax dollar. So that's, you know, I'm appreciative of, you know, people talk about things.
Okay.
But really, it means us. This is something we didn't plan on. We planned on a lot of things, but this is in a budget.
So eighteen percent, eighteen and a half percent?
Eighteen and a half dollars you would collect, send, go to the state of Mississippi.
Of the tax dollar, the actual tax, yeah, okay.
Of the sales tax collection. Okay, and they divert at this point in time, eighteen point five cents on every dollar you collect.
So that would be one point four million dollars of sales tax generated on twenty million. Eighteen and a half percent of that is roughly, uh, help me.
Three hundred thousand.
Three hundred thousand dollars.
Be about a sixth of whatever the amount was.
Yeah.
I mean, five thousand on a million.
So, uh, let me see.
Point one, two nine thousand.
One point four million. It's three hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, roughly.
Three hundred thousand dollars would be, and that's just, um, the sales tax. I don't know whatever, what other, um, taxes directly. I don't, I'm not familiar with your accounting, but, you know, there's hospitality tax from hotels. I'm sure that there's some kind of revenue generation from the gaming.
Your million dollars worth of business, point one, two nine is what the sales tax diversion would be to the city.
Okay, thirteen percent.
With all due respect, if we get back to the que, thank you, Mayor.
I mean...
Sorry. Economic lesson. But, uh, Lawrence, you may still have questions. I don't know. I'd kind of like to get some questions out of you. Thank you, Mayor.
No, he's finished. He's finished.
But it looked like to me what needs to be done now, I don't know what we have to do, is this appeal or nothing. I think you need to go back and sit down with the Chief Miller and put everything back together since you done changed a lot of stuff from originally with the additional parking, different things you done. And see, meet with whoever you met with before the Chief Miller. Do you have a group that he has to meet with?
I sent it there.
And nail down everything the way it is now, not the way it was before. And then bring that back to us. I mean, I think that's a simple, the thing to keep your thing going, keep it all in motion. And you've got to answer FOPO's question because that eighteen point five percent, it goes crazy.
I'm trying. I'm trying to show you the money.
Okay, Mr. Lawrence, are you done or do you have a...
I don't think anymore questions. I think, I think it all needs to be put back together right now. So it's kind of like, it's like a total different plan than what it was before to me.
All right, we'll move to Mr. Guns. Mr. Guns, any questions?
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to say thank you for, uh, doing all your homework. Uh, you crunch the numbers. You've looked at every avenue you can look at. And it was funny. I was, uh, walking the streets the other day and one of the guys was telling me about Daytona Beach, which was a couple of weeks ago. And we were discussing our motorcycles. And he was asking, when are we going to bring something here? Yeah, very ironic, you know, and of course, I'm not a Harley guy. I'm a, a Honda guy.
Bring your Honda. Bring your Honda.
Gold wing, that is.
Bring your gold wing.
Bring the gold wing, yeah. So this could be something that's very inclusive. Um, I like the idea. Also been down to the Sanctuary. I saw the amazing job that you guys have done down at the Sanctuary. Um, the DJ is in the, uh, baptismal pool, so you can be baptized by the right song. So, you know, I think this is going to be a, a good opportunity for us. I believe it's a good op, opportunity. I do think, um, you, you mentioned something early about maybe moving the music part down toward closer to the water. And that, that might be something, um, that I would probably look at a little bit more.
Okay.
You know, talking with the chief to try to figure out the, uh, logistics of that.
Just for everybody's information, I did talk to Treasure Bay and told them that we may look at that as an alternative and we've been approved to do that. So that would be as easy as you guys saying, hey, we want you to do that and it's done. That's done. We can do that right now.
And that can probably make it more containable.
And, and the more I'm thinking about it, that's probably what we will do because I don't want to irritate any of the neighbors. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Anymore than I already do.
Yeah, and more containable. So, uh, I, I, you know, I'm, I have no, no, no problem, uh, you know, supporting this here at all. I mean, it, it's, everything looks fine and you did all your homework. So I appreciate that.
Thank you, Felix. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guns. Ms. Newman, any comments, questions? Mr. McGilvery?
I got just a couple. Um, several of my colleagues have, have mentioned and brought up the issue of, um, public safety. Chief Miller got up here and, and sternly related that he doesn't have the manpower. This, uh, the mayor's mentioned this is the wrong time. Scraping the coast is the, the week after. Allocations from other agencies, uh, have already been dedicated to that, uh, event. This is a great event, I believe. You've done a great presentation. I think it's the wrong time. Uh, going back and getting with the chief of police and his team to come up with a plan to, uh, utilize, uh, whatever forces can be mustered for this event is, is, has already been said by Chief Miller, cannot happen. They're not there. Public safety has got to be paramount and I just don't see it, um, in, in, in this, uh, event. That's all I have.
All right, thank you, Mr. McGilvery. Mr. Glavine, any, anything else?
Just make a comment. What's interesting, so, uh, I'm going to go back to the Harley blowout. Uh, the, the hotels looked, like, I can tell you, the hotels looked forward to it. But one little quirky thing is that we learned over the years with the bikers, um, we had to provide them complimentary shop towels when they checked in. Because if not, they would use the, uh, they would use the, the towels in the, uh, bathroom to shine their chrome and all that kind of stuff. So they got to supply, complimentary supply of shop towels. Uh, I got a question for the chief. Chief, is, is, are you set in your mind that we definitely cannot pull this off at all?
Chief, if you come up to the mic please so we can, everybody can hear your comments.
Uh, you're, I, I hear you. You're concerned that, you, you know, a, a thousand or maybe even two thousand bikes, that's, that's something probably we could swallow, but if you got beyond that, you have concerns about that. Is that accurate?
Well, I've got really more concerns about my people and the overtime that we keep putting on. We've talked about this for a couple of years now, about the strain that it's putting on us and all these events. And I've done, there's nothing else I can do unless y'all can dream up something to relieve that stress. Right after this event, the way it's set right now, right after the event, we have another major event, a tier one event, that y'all will expect me to keep this city safe. I'm sure that's what you expect from me. I don't know that I can do that. I don't know that I'm going to have enough people who have enough energy. I mean, they, they deserve some time off too, right? I mean, all of them should have a vacation and, and right now, we tell them when they can have a vacation, not when they want to have one, simply because of the number of events. Every event that we have, I've come up here for the last few years and told you the downside of it, and it's always been manpower. I have nothing against this man. I have nothing against this bike show. It sounds like a great idea. Uh, I, I would hope that it would bring a lot of money into the city, but the reality of it is, we're, we're to that point with not only our infrastructure, but with the infrastructure of our people and what they can continue to maintain. That's where we're at. I mean, I, I can't help any of that. And the mayor's right. This is, you think that these overtime things are, you know, fifty, sixty thousand dollars. I, I'm going to go out on a limb and say this is going to be a three hundred thousand dollar event. That's what it's going to cost us. Three hundred thousand dollars. Guarantee you. Now, I can go do the numbers on that and maybe I'm off a little bit, but it's going to be, it's going to be doggone close to that. That's, that's where we're at. It's, it's not, not that, that, that we're frowning on doing it, that we, we don't want to have a bike, a, 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 a bike rally here or a bike show. It's not any of that. The fact is that we have to look at reality and we have to know what our limitations are. And when we're there, God forbid in the middle of this, if manpower is so strained and we've got just enough to keep traffic moving and all that, let's say we have a shooting. Let's say we have a massive shooting, which we see in the news every day in other cities, all over the place. We've had them right here. Let's say we have that. Where am I going to pull that manpower to deal with that shooting? Where am I going to pull the manpower to try to keep people safe?
Chief, as it's been suggested by Councilman Lawrence, um, you think if, if y'all went back to the table, took another bite at this apple, that maybe something could be worked out on, maybe on dates, maybe, maybe there's something we haven't thought about yet. I mean, I, I know you, you, you feel like you have, but I, I'd hate to, this man's done a lot of work and there's a lot of new information today than when he originally filled out this application to try to make it work. So now it boils down to, we got parking settled, we got some of the other, uh, questions settled. Now it boils down to the pure manpower to not stress our police, uh, department out. I, I would...
Not just police department. When we do an event like this, it's every department, just about it. Especially, especially Billy Ray's folks. Uh, you can't tell me those folks aren't stressed out. I know that they are. There's a lot of physical work that they have to do for every event. Physical work.
Well, I would, instead of, it, it looks like it probably, the mayor may not have the votes, maybe leaning toward not having the votes. I, I would like to, uh, follow Councilman Lawrence's suggestion, maybe, uh, table it for, uh, just a small, because this man has to promote her or he's going to miss the opportunity to be able to pull this thing off if we can get there. And perhaps there's, uh, some time, Mr. Lawrence, you, you, is that where you want to go?
Definitely.
Okay.
I want to be able to help the chief. I want to be able to help him to put the event on. But it's still going to come down to how many policemen, how much safety you have to have to make everything under control the best you can. I mean, like you said, you can't stop shooting. You can't stop anything. Can't stop fights, you know? They all drink a little bit. They all become gorillas, you know? They think they want to fight everybody in the world. That happens, you know? But I mean, we'd have to find out from you what you think you actually need people-wise handling the event because it's not going to be like cruising that long. I mean, it's been, don't seem to be set up the same way. I, I know they be riding their bikes back and forth, but cruising, I mean, they stopped the highway when it's cruising, there's so many cars. They just shut it down. So I mean, that's a big difference than what you need people-wise to be safe enough to take care of cities, like you said, because that's your job. You know, that's why, that's why you're the chief. So...
April eighth, if we tabled today, April eighth, do you think y'all, y'all could work, at least keep communicating, see where we can get to?
Totally appreciate it, but...
If you would, grab, grab a mic. I'm sorry, so folks can hear you.
I completely appreciate, uh, what the chief is saying and, and I get it. But let's be honest, this is a tourist town. Five thousand people could show up tonight. I mean, it's not a lot of people, you know, and, and I, 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 I don't know, and, and we're talking about over the span of several days. I really expect hundreds of people to be through our place per day. I put in the application a thousand, uh, per day. That's not, and they're on motorcycles, not on big cars. I mean, I, I will do anything that we can do, anything that we are asked, uh, you know, and I, and I really think that we're, um, ex, expecting something that's not going to happen. This isn't going to be some kind of crazy, wild, rowdy event where we're going to need police support, uh, every five minutes. I, I, I hope that we will need very little of it other than traffic management and, you know, an occasional person being knucklehead or whatever. But this isn't, um, I, I really think that we're overestimating what it's going to do for impact on traffic. And I think that all the work that we've done and the leases that we've secured address all of those issues, uh, as best as anybody could be expected to predict the future. I don't know if there's going to be fifty people that show up.
Yeah, I mean, a, a concert at the Coliseum, six thousand, right?
Twenty-two thousand, actually.
Twenty-two thousand.
Yeah, it's twenty-two thousand. And that happens, there's one, uh, this weekend, I think. The Crawfish Festival is, I think, the Saturday. There's twenty-two thousand people there Saturday. That's in the city of Biloxi. Are we going to not do that? You know, and I'm not trying to be difficult. I respect and, and appreciate the seriousness of all of this. But we are a tourism town. We're the beach. We're Biloxi. We expect people. We want people to come here. And honestly, I empathize, and it sounds like a bigger problem is we need to find out some more money for the chief year round and some more, uh, troops. I mean, we need to hire some more cops. If it's that hard, we need to, we need to get him some more people, is what it sounds like to me, which is a much bigger issue than me wanting to do a little motorcycle event on a three-day weekend. Um, and I would one thousand percent support that. And I pay a hell of a lot of tax in this town through multiple dimensions. And I would be happy to see my tax dollars go to more resources for the police department and the fire department. And I think that that might be something that we, we might want to talk about on April eighth.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine. Uh, Mr. Schumaker, I think you have a...
I have a few things. Uh, I agree a thousand percent. We need to hire more policemen. I think the police department would agree as well. Um, I think the presentation was great. All the information you've spoken about handed out fantastic. I would love to see the event. I mean, we're Biloxi. We need all we can get and, 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 I mean, I would be all for it. However, yeah, I spent most of my adult life as a policeman here in Biloxi. So I know what it's like when there's not enough of us and when you hadn't slept. And it was, it's way worse now than it was when I was working. Um, unfortunately, uh, I don't think, um, and I know what we're saying, that maybe five hundred people show up, a thousand people show up, and maybe that happens. But on the other side of that, Black Spring Break, the first year they ever showed up on the coast, we didn't know it hit us. It, it was something like you'd see in a movie. Not saying, and I'm not comparing you guys to Black Spring Break other than, we're saying, nobody's going to show up possibly, but what if? What if they do show up and then we don't have the security and the police? Then what happens? Then we've got a problem. And we sit here today and discuss it. And if we don't talk about that, I think we're, it's a disservice to the, to the city and to the police department. And my issue is, if it was another time, I know the police department is still going to struggle with people, obviously. We've got a lot of events. My issue is, it's, you're, you're back to back with a scrape in the coast. And, you know, as much as I hate to say it, um, I just can't support it for that reason. If it was another time, I could probably support it because I, I would love to see it here. But I, I just, I know this, the, the safety aspect from it, from public safety and the police, I just, I can't support it for that reason.
Well, and I appreciate that. And I'm glad that you mentioned Spring Break because I know that they were not issued a permit. I don't even know if they, uh, filed one, but I know that they do not have a permit and we are preparing a tier one response for that event, that unpermitted event. I'm sitting here telling you all what preparation we have done and asking for you to advise us how we can coll, collaborate and cooperate more. Are you aware of that, that we are, we are paying for a tier one event response for Spring Break that does not have a permit?
Yeah, I'm a hundred percent aware of that. And the reason being, it's been here, I don't know, twenty-some odd years and tens of thousands of people come yearly to that.
Exactly.
So I think the second year they didn't get a permit probably isn't going to keep tens of thousands of people coming.
And we're trying to...
Now, what I would think is that as many people that have been coming probably are not going to come, but what would we be? How could we not prepare for a tier one event when it's been like that for twenty-five years?
Exactly.
And I get what you're saying. However, we can say five people are going to show up or ten thousand people are going to show up. Until it happens, we have no idea who's going to show up. So again, as a city, as the police department, we have to prepare for that. If we don't prepare for that, then what happens? We have a hundred thousand or twenty thousand people show up and we have a half, uh, uh, schedule of policemen show up and then there's a fight, a shooting, an accident. And then what happens? So we have to prepare. I, I know what you're saying, but...
Yeah, and that, and that's like kind of making my case of what I was saying earlier. We're a tourist destination. We don't know who's going to show up tonight. You know what I mean?
But we have to prepare. Regardless of how many people show up, we can't prepare for fifty because fifty thousand could show up. And unfortunately, the police don't have the manpower and that's not going to change. Now, again, if it's not the week prior to, then I, I don't have a, as big as problem, as long as there's not another major event close to that.
Okay.
But that's my big issue right now. Police protection, public safety, and not having the manpower the week prior to a major event.
And you have my complete support on that. And I think everybody in our community's support on that. Uh, we don't want these guys to be tired or, guys and girls to be tired and not being able to get rest and be able to do their job effectively a thousand percent. And I mean it when I say that I'm behind finding more money for, for this organization and, and for them to get more personnel. If that's really a problem like that, that's, that's something that we need to look at on a much larger scale because that, I mean, like we just both established, we have to prepare for the worst. And it sounds like we are, um, you know, have a, have a staffing shortage in general, to me.
You, you had, uh, mentioned here about you hiring, uh, private security.
Yes, sir.
How many people you are planning on hiring?
However many the chief tells me he wants me to hire.
But that would be put on you?
Well, it's going to be part of the cost of the event. We've already factored in, um, hiring, I mean, I, I can't hire the police department, but there is a program where you can hire off-duty Harrison County Sheriff's Office officers and reserve officers officially as part-time security. And then we've also... as part-time security. And then we've also worked with, the company's called Defense Pro. Uh, the guy that runs it used to be the chief of police in Lumberton, Mississippi. He knows what he's doing, and he is the one that we're working with to provide contracted security that will be one hundred percent our cost. That's not including, uh, what the city tax base pays for. That's people that we had already planned on bringing. And if, if, if this council or the chief wants us to make sure we get X number of people, we'll do it. I mean, we're, we're here to make this a success. We're, I'm not trying to be a burden to anybody in this room, certainly not the chief of police or the fire chief.
No, to make it a good event, it's got to be good for everybody.
We want it to be good for everybody, for sure. We want it to be a year-after-year legacy, legacy event. I'm taking everything that they're saying seriously. I wish I had a solution. I wish I could write you a check for three hundred grand and pay for these guys. And hope, maybe we can at the end of this event. Maybe, maybe we produce enough revenue that it, that it, you know, is cost-neutral, or maybe the city makes a couple of dollars. You know, that's, that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to market it. And that's why I, I'm, I'm struggling with, uh, any date changes, because marketing this, I didn't even know that we had to have this. We didn't think that it was going to be considered this kind of event. Um, Captain Payne saw our advertising and reached out to us and said, hey, you guys should probably look at filling out one of these permit applications, because our advertising was getting a lot of reach. It takes a lot of marketing dollars and marketing momentum to get people to show up to a thing like this from, from different places. So we've already put that in place. That's my only hesitation with changing the date. I certainly would be, go to a different date next year, absolutely without hesitation.
I'm kind of like the rest of them. The date's not going to affect anything. They probably have the manpower. Can you handle the manpower anytime you want to? That's why I think you need to get-
Well, that's, I mean, once that we can-
Do what you can hire. But we have just set this thing up, just like you're doing, so you could come here and talk to us.
Sure.
So, and you are here, at least you came and talked to that Black Spring, we don't get anybody.
Well, that's what I mean, at least I'm, I'm saying, hey, here's what we're thinking. We need help. You know, this is really us wanting to let you know what we're up against and what we think are problems, and asking for support.
Okay, I have a couple of observations.
Okay.
And I think Captain Payne is still here. I'll have a, okay, I have a question or two in, in a few minutes. But I just want to make a couple of observations. I want you to look at the, the map up there on the display, and everything in yellow is a residential area.
Mm-hmm.
And running east and west, about in the middle of that picture is Southern Avenue. And in the middle, running north and south, top to bottom, is Camelia Street. And, um, as Mr. Steerman said, on the corner of Camelia, Camelia and Southern Avenue is where the sanctuary is located. My first observation is that no matter what you do, it's not the nature of the event, it's human nature. There will be, if these are motorcycles, there will be people all through that neighborhood at all hours on a motorcycle. And I say that because we deal with Spring Break and Cruising the Break, uh, on the other side of the Coliseum in my ward. And those folks, literally, many of them, don't leave their neighborhood, because there's very few ways to get in and out. You've got the railroad tracks, you have one way out to the north that's on Iris Street, you have to cross the tracks, and that, that's a concern. Uh, if the tra- if the train stops, as sometimes it does, why and when? I don't know if anybody can make any sense of that, but sometimes it does. Sometimes blocking Bowfaw Road. So that's the first observation. The second observation is particularly this year, we've had three, I think, if I read the packet correctly, we've had three tier-one events in March. So that requires some overtime, different amount of officers, but some overtime. Uh, we've got Scraping the Coast in June, and then this would be the week, week before, I think, in June. Uh, Captain Payne, if you don't mind, if you'd come grab a mic. Thank you, Mr. Steerman.
Thank you.
So the, the application deadline, uh, basically for this special event packet, I, I don't know the date, I'm assuming the deadline was-
I can't, I can't remember. It was, uh, right around when I called him. It was close to that.
Because it's a tier-one event, generally it's going to be, what, ninety, a hundred and twenty days, I think?
A hundred and twenty days, sir.
And, and was this application completed and filed?
Uh, filed enough for us to bring it to the committee. Uh, we knew there would be some add-on things, like vendors, um, events, uh, those types of things, but enough for us to look at resources and make a decision on it.
Right. Now, would you say this packet was complete?
Uh, yes. It was complete, except, except for the park. We didn't know about the parking when he submitted the, uh, application.
Well, right, parking, so that's one thing, and I think you've remedied that. But the, the reason I'm pointing these things out, another, another point I wanted to make, I'm thinking they're going to be, I think I read there, uh, merchandise vendors, there may be food, mobile food trucks and so forth. Typically, for these events, the whole, I say typically, the purpose of this special event process was to have all that in place when that packet was presented to you. And if, if it wasn't, if something was incomplete, you could say, I need this or need that. Or that went to the special events committee for consideration.
Yes, sir. That, that's why we said there was going to be vendors. Um, we, we know that a lot of these events, especially new events in the area, uh, we don't want the event process to be over, um, to be too difficult. Um, so, um, when you're asking them to have all their vendor names and what type of vendors they're going to have, that's unreasonable for them. But for them to say, we're going to have vendors, we're going to have events, we're going to have speakers, that, that's a reasonable request. Um, so that's why, um, we, we don't require them to give us a list right then. They know that as, as it goes on, and they go to community development to get the, um, the shingle, the specific event permit, they need the list.
Right.
Um, so, um, when it goes to the event committee, the application was complete enough for us to go forward with that part of it.
Right, okay. Um, and I'm thinking if this, if the event occurred, then in successive years, whoever the promoter was would, would come with that information. They know the routine, they know the drill.
Y- y- yes, sir.
Okay. Chief, if you don't mind, and, uh, because I don't think Captain Payne can answer this, how, how many officer, sworn officer vacancies do, do you have? You may not know exactly, but I know every month we have some. The only question is, how many?
So, we have close to-
We have close to a dozen vacancies right now, but that, that's not even the issue. The issue is that we have a hundred, if we're completely staffed, we have a hundred and thirty-eight officers right now. We need two hundred officers to take care of all these events. And the mayor has, has told us many times, if we can get them, he'll hire them.
Exactly.
But we can't hire those officers. You can't find them anymore. They're just not out there to find like that.
And the, and the reason I ask you that question, because it fluctuates. At one point, you were twenty-one officers down. We, and as the mayor said, and I've told anybody who will listen, if you're a sworn officer, come to work in Biloxi, because we, we don't have enough. The other thing is, I think typically we budget about a million dollars in overtime. In some years, we use nine hundred thousand, other years it may be one point one million or whatever. I don't know the revenue that's generated from these events. But just, just from the number of vehicles that it draws, there are only three, and these are not major roads, these are two-lane roads in and out of the area that go through, all three of these, uh, points of ingress and egress are all basically residential lateral streets in order to get to Highway ninety.
That's right, yes.
And although they're motorcycles and not cars, that's a ton of traffic coming and going. And that's, that's always the issue. Um, I think, Chief-
E- e- even if this event, let's say this event doesn't bring what we think it's going to bring, you know? I, I'm, I'm thinking it's probably going to bring ten thousand, but let's say that it doesn't do that. Let's say it brings five thousand. Five thousand people on, on any given day in the city of Biloxi, especially if you're looking at the weekends, there's already, already eighty thousand people in town on, on a normal day, normal day. So you add that additional, and it becomes a traffic issue. Even if there's no, there's no violence, we have a, a major traffic issue that we have to deal with. And, and Councilman, you were talking about people at the Coliseum. That's one of those events that I'm, I'm talking about, that we have to deal with already, constantly. That's almost a daily thing for us. Almost.
Right. And, uh, again, when the Coliseum has that event, my experience is with all the traffic, in that particular case, there's a west parking lot, and they open a gate, and hundreds of cars go through a residential neighborhood. And I, I would tell you, for anybody who lives in the greater, or greater Biloxi subdivision, there's going to be more traffic than you think. That's not a good thing or a bad thing, it's just a consideration. Um, a- and again, my concern is, June is what, we're April, May, June, ten weeks from now, roughly. And, uh, I, I agree with Mr. Lawrence. I'd like to see, maybe not approve it at this time, uh, if they want to go back to the drawing board and, uh, put some things together a little more comprehensively with, uh, all the planning and based on the input today. I'm happy to reconsider that. Uh, thank you, Chief. Does anybody else have any comments or questions?
I want more comments. Uh, I, man, my, my heart aches, because it, like he said, we're a tourist town. Uh, Mississippi State was just here for a two-game, uh, you know, gig here at, uh, Keesler Park. Southern is, uh, also playing there.
Tonight.
And, and, that's right, I don't know. And, uh, you know, this man, I, I'm impressed, uh, if he, he didn't know this was allowed, and he put his plan together, and he adjusted to the plan. I'm also impressed that, that there was give and take, uh, with the committee, with him. And I, and I do believe there was a concerted effort to make it happen and not make it happen. However, if the, if, if, if it was recognized at the very beginning, we just can't do this, why would we waste anybody's time? But, uh, and that's unfortunate. I mean, we all want to be a tier-one, we talk about a tier-one destination, and we got to have the manpower. I get it. I, I, I get to that. But what an opportunity lost here that we can't figure it out. We got, we got to be a city without fear to some degree. We got to be a city that has a can-do attitude. Those who believe they're, they can, those who believe they can't are probably right. And I just don't want us to be that, that city that believes that we can't. Uh, that, and again, that's a quote by Henry Ford, not me. Um, I hope, again, Mr. Lawrence recommended that we maybe table it to, to our next meeting, and hope there, there's some ingenuity and some will to make this happen, to see if we can. And if we can't, that's who we are, we can't. Okay? But let's, let's at least make one more bite at this apple.
Yeah, this year, I think.
I would say that I, sorry.
Thank you.
I apologize. I'm just looking at my calendar, and in light of, you know, ticket sales and everything, if, if it's, because it's the week before Scraping, what if we compromise and I move it forward one week? That gives two weeks in between two big events. Can we, can we compromise and do that?
That has been a recommendation, I think I've heard from the, the committee, that the dates maybe don't work.
No, it's not going to make your life any better. I mean, well, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm willing to try to come up with something. I, moving it tremendously would be moving it to next year. And, and that would be a massive opportunity lost. Um, I, I, I think that we could reasonably do that. We could move it forward a weekend to put two weeks between us and Scraping. And we do start on a Thursday, and I really don't expect an inaugural, I mean, I would love for it to be wildly successful, but I don't expect an inaugural event to bring everybody out from the woodwork. Three, four years down, for sure, I think it'll be busy. But, uh, that would be something that we would be willing to compromise if this council recommended it. I mean, we're, we're here to figure this out. We're not here to create problems, we're here to find solutions.
Thanks. I think we still have another comment down this way. Mr. Gans?
That's not a bad move.
Or Mr. Lawrence.
It's still, you have to get together, find out the personnel you need to put this on as far as, as with the safety. And that's the key with Chief Miller and you. If y'all can get together and come over, the weak move might help it, get the little, the little pressure off, the overtime. But you still need to find out, I don't care if you're going to have four thousand, you just come up with a number. It takes X amount of people to be there to handle four thousand people, additional people. What did it take policemen-wise and everybody else-wise to handle four thousand or five thousand, whatever it might be? You have to come up with a number, then set the people that you need to maximize out them numbers. And that's why I was hoping y'all could get back together and discuss what y'all can, and come bring something back. I mean, I had no problem tabling this, but we can let y'all try to work something out. Uh, like Kenny said, you know, we're, we're a tourist town, we love people, we love them coming. You know, but we have to have safety too, because you've got fifty thousand people in the city of Biloxi, and they're all over the streets, just like every weekend, because they move around like that, besides the additional tourists that come in town. So another five thousand people is something that we have to handle, because you kind of located one spot. They might be riding the Bay St. Louis, the Pascals, but they're, most of them, if they come to the bands and the shows that you have, and, and you're going to have a lot of people in one spot. And that's probably where you're going to need most of the police power. So that's why I was just hoping y'all could work that out. That was just my take. Didn't want to just cut you off and say, no, we're not going to do it? I think we'd do a better shot of, hey, let's see if we can work this out, and see how many people we need to run it. I know it's tough on Chief Miller, because he's limited, he's got a hundred and thirty-eight officers. You have to, have to bring in extra people if they're willing to come. So, and they don't come for twenty-eight dollars, they, they thirty-five dollars here.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gans. You had a comment, I believe.
Uh, yeah, um, just want to kind of, um, in wrapping this up, you know, I respect what the chief is saying, uh, with the logistics part of it. But I want to look back at the bikers or the proposal. And he's saying, I think George said something about, uh, working it out, trying to find a way to work it out. Well, they did everything right. They, they came in within a timeframe. They did everything as far as getting the paperwork in. They talked to each and every person, everything that was, uh, brought to them. They did everything that they can do. And now they're on a time crunch, because you're only talking about, what, a little more than sixty days, sixty days and a week, or maybe two weeks, uh, to get this done. And I'm sure that you guys put a lot of money into advertising this already. So it, it, it kind of aches at me to hear us as a council say, well, you know, this man did everything he asked for. Everything. He talked to each and every individual, mayor, council members, uh, tried to talk to the police department, working through community development, and everybody. And it, and it, it hurts me that we can't find a solution to this to move forward. And then we're going to kick the can down the road another week or two, which will hold them back even more. Uh, I do believe that they need an answer today. That, that's just my personal feeling. And I know how some of you guys, you know, feel about the police issue. And that is an issue. It's a very deep concern. But we had somebody that did everything right. And do we go out and punish them for doing right? We have so many people that come and do things wrong. So many people that do things wrong. We had a group that did something wrong earlier this year. And we, we reward bad hea- bad behavior. Well, some people who are doing things right, at some point, we have to reward the ones that do things right. And that's just how I feel. And that's just how I see it. Thank you. That concludes. I'm out.
Thank you, okay. Are you ready to call for the question? All right.
I think there was a motion to table it.
No, I didn't hear a motion. We, we've got a motion, um, and a second to discuss it.
Well, I'd like to amend my motion.
Okay.
It, it, and clerk, correct me if I'm wrong, I can amend my motion, which was actually to bring it out for discussion.
Can't vote on it, yes you can.
I'm sorry?
They had to vote on it, so yes you can.
Yeah, I think you can, go ahead.
That's correct. I, I was reminded of that. So, uh, I'd like to amend my motion to approve the application.
Second.
All right, so there's a motion to approve, and a second by Ms. Newman to approve the event. Okay, uh, any other comments? I just have one, and that is, you heard your police chief for the city of Biloxi tell you he doesn't have the manpower for this event, may not have the manpower for this event, and that his officers are extremely fatigued with the number of events we've had this, this year. And as you've heard on previous occasions, you cannot get the number of officers from neighboring departments as you did in the past. All right, having said that, we'll call for the question.
Any more questions? Because you just made a comment, and that means-
Well, you can do that when you're president.
All right, all in favor of the-
That's just not right. That's not right, though. That's not right. That's not according with the rules.
Okay.
We'll keep the circus going. Go ahead, Mr. Lawrence. Go ahead, Mr. Lawrence. I'll recognize you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Gans, you'll be next.
Point of order, point of order.
Still be next. Mr. Lawrence, you can comment. Mr. Lawrence, you can comment. Go ahead.
Point of order.
Mr. Lawrence, you can comment.
When you open up the door, you have to-
The Lawrence, you can comment.
Acknowledge the person.
The Lawrence, you can-
The Lawrence, you can comment unless you yield to Mr. Gines, if you wish to.
I want to ask one question.
Go ahead.
If you voted down, what happens to them, is dead?
I think you could make an amendment to table it, to give them the opportunity to talk about it until our...
I don't think you can, once you deny it.
What's that?
You can't do it, that's what I'm saying, you gotta be careful what you're doing, if you wanna try to have the venue, let them work it out, then...
All right, Ms. Newman, if you withdraw your second, I'll offer a new amendment, and I'll withdraw my first amendment. I'd like to offer up that the parties get together and at our April eighth meeting, see if they can work the particulars out to bring it back to the council for reconsideration.
I'm second.
I think that's the only option.
So table it to April eighth.
Put your motion in second.
Put the four mile amendment.
Yeah, our next meet.
Put your motion in, go for it. That's the resolution. Now, if you want your motion, April.
That's what I thought I did. Oh, we gotta vote on it, we gotta vote on the, I got you.
Vote on the denial.
That gives the rules.
Go ahead, go ahead, Carrie.
That's the chairman need to learn the rules.
Motion and second is on the... Don't redid it to...
Correct.
If you want to table it, like it is, and table it like it is now.
Okay, there's no amendments, just a table.
Not amended.
All right. So I withdrew the first and second, we could table it.
Don't want to withdraw it, it has to be...
Okay, no, my amendment, I withdrew. Now, what's on the table, my original motion, originally, we're gonna make a motion to table it.
Table it for a week.
We can do that, right? Okay.
Motion to table, table eighth. All right, so that's a motion by Mr. Glavine to table this until April eighth, we're looking for a second now, is that correct?
Second.
A second by Mr. Lawrence. All right, all right, and I believe Mr. Gines had a comment, thank you for waiting patiently.
Yes, I think we need, when we open up the door for questions, it needs to be opened up to everyone, just because we sit in the chair seat, it's, when you open it up, you open it up for everyone, we need to review our rules, or at least get our attorney to make sure we hit the rules proper, do it proper, decent, and in order, thank you.
And I think, we had this discussion several months ago when you were allowed to comment, thank you, thank you.
You just got to get the last word in, don't you, Dr. T?
Well, when you're president, you do.
You just gotta get them all, don't you?
Yeah, I do, I do.
You just got to get the last word in.
I do, we'll call for the question.
Move it forward, thank you.
All in, all, well, we gotta have discussion, we'll never end discussion. All right, Mr. Lawrence?
We're ready to vote.
Mr. Gines? Ms. Newman?
I'm in favor of tabling it, so it don't die.
Good. Mr. McGilvery?
Only one comment, tabling it's not gonna satisfy the law enforcement end of it. Chief Miller has said that he can't handle this function, he doesn't have the manpower. I have forty years of law enforcement experience at the Biloxi Police Department, I know exactly what he's talking about. You can only reach out to these other agencies so often, and this, this situation is just not gonna work. He doesn't have the manpower. He doesn't have it today, he's not gonna have it in two weeks, he's not gonna have it in two months. This thing needs to be rescheduled for another time and then sit down and discuss it. It's an outstanding event, there's no question about it. The presentation has covered everything from parking and all the necessities that's needed, except law enforcement, it's not here. Law enforcement cannot handle this function, that's my comment.
I think we'll go to Mr. Shoemaker, now I'll come back to Mr. Glavine, Mr. Shoemaker, nothing, Mr. Glavine?
I, look, we talked it to death, the event, the Ground Zero, pardon the pun, is right at where one of the major venues is, which has significant hotel rooms to absorb, not only the people that are coming to the event, but to provide a gaming venue for those who wanna partake in that. They've already said they have events up and down the beach, so it will be spread out. As I believe it's an inaugural event, I don't believe it's gonna, I may be wrong, I don't have a crystal ball, but I do believe an inaugural event doesn't bring the numbers initially like some of the others. We gotta find a way to be a tourism destination, and that's why giving it a little time, there may be something we have not thought about. Chief did mention it backs up to another event, and the promoter just said he's willing to move the event so it doesn't back up to another event, which would give some relief, it has to give some relief if that was the concern. Perhaps as we mull it over, all of us, and cooler heads prevail, we may or may not come up with a remedy, but I think it's worth tabling it for a short period of time to see if we can make this worthwhile event happen. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, okay, so there's a motion and a second to table this matter, all in favor of tabling this special event application? All opposed? It's approved on a four-three vote, so it's tabled until, I think, our next council meeting, which is April eighth, which is a Tuesday at six o'clock. Okay, that concludes the hearing, we now move to the consent agenda. All entertain a motion?
I'll second.
All right, was that a motion by Mr. Lawrence? Second by Mr. Gines? Okeydoke, Mr. Lawrence?
Pup on A, you had the debt collector, collecting, what kind of debt?
I'm not sure, wait, Rachel, you can...
A.
These are for, on water accounts that were, that were, that were closed, these are for water accounts that were closed out, that have, that are overdue and had still balances, they were given notice pursuant to the Debt Set Off Act and given an opportunity to have a public hearing on this, for just about all, yeah, all these individuals didn't respond, and so that's where these individuals are, this is all for unpaid water department accounts.
And I noticed on G, and one on the back, they're both dealing with the Sanger, the twenty-two thousand, they do the floor, they had G and I think it's P. So what is the difference with those two? They're both twenty-two thousand, five hundred, doing the floor, which that's fine, we need to do that, so why there's two up?
One of them is to approve the purchase order, and one of them is to move, that was originally being paid for out of the Public Works budget, but they're moving it into the Capital Projects budget just to capture all the costs associated with the Sanger in one place.
So you approved, the first one we approved, the twenty-two thousand?
Yes.
And the second, you're moving that money into the Sanger Fund?
Correct, that's correct.
Just wanna make sure we had that right.
Yep.
All right, that's it. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Gines, anything?
None.
Ms. Newman, anything? Mr. McGilvery? Uh, Mr., what's your name, Shoemaker?
That was Rob.
Okay, I do have a question about item J, this deals with a portion of the sales tax for the new Rouses, and I know, typically I'm thinking this, something like this is related to a tip, but I don't believe this was a tip, but this was some sort of incentive?
It is, we, in twenty-three, we entered an agreement with SMPDD and X3 Tango, which is the development company for Rouses. This is a resolution to amend the budget, that agreement has already been approved, we just failed to include the money in the budget, because I didn't have a payment on it yet, so we received first quarter of sales.
So we agreed to amend a portion of the sales tax?
Yes, it's up to five...
As part of the deal to get them in here, is that correct, Mayor?
That's correct, and as soon as that number's reached, every, the diversion, you know, that arrangement comes all told back to us.
Right, so this is the only...
The faster the sales, the more the sales, the better off we are, is what it's trying to be.
Right, so this is the only payment in this fiscal year that...
No, we will, this is not one payment, this is enough money, we pay this quarterly, this is enough money based on the first quarter sales for us to get through the year.
Okay, so we'll do this quarterly for how many years, one?
We'll do it quarterly until we reach five million dollars.
That's right, okay, that was the agreement upfront, that's correct, thank you, for reminding me of that. Beg your pardon?
That's why they're here.
Exactly, all right, let's, I think that's all I have. All in favor of the consent agenda is presented, it's approved on a five-o vote, the clerk would note that Mr. Glavine and Mr. Gines were out of the room. That's a five-o vote, great, were there any exceptions, Mr. Lawrence?
None.
Ms. Newman, any exceptions? Mr. McGilvery?
I have none, no exceptions, Carrie, thank you. That brings us to code enforcement hearings, immersively, we have none. Good job, Mr. Creel, that brings us next to the routine agenda, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll second.
By Mr. Lawrence, second by Mr. Gines.
In the checkbook, Walt, don't come with your empty hand, now.
Good afternoon, council, we still have not received the one point two four two million from Mima, it's currently in step four or five, it's been there six days, we should have it within the next six calendar days, definitely before our next April eighth meeting. We do have a scheduled conference call with Mima this Thursday, and I'll be bringing that point up to them, that we do not have our one point two four two million at this time. And also by our next council meeting on April eighth, we should know what our next round of funding beyond the one point two four two million is.
Question left, we used to say something about the, all the tornadoes they have, does that affect you dealing with fame and them?
Sir.
With all the tornadoes they had, I mean, do they still have a lot of people you're dealing with, or they, somewhere else, with the tornadoes up in the middle of the state and everything?
Not for us, ours, our officers that we deal with, with Mima, are the same ones we've dealt with for a long extended period of time, and they're down here for us, and it's very routine, everyone knows their place within Mima, their accounting group, the horn group in the city, so it's fairly routine, and we're very lucky in that sense.
Yeah, I didn't want us to get into a slowdown period, because we've been pretty much, y'all been staying on top of it, been working, don't get all upset, Pup, I'm trying to be nice to you again.
Thank you, Walt.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions on the routine agenda, there being none, we'll call for the question, all in favor? It's approved on a five-o vote, is there a motion to adjourn by Mr. McGilvery?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lawrence? All in favor?
Yeah.